All right, we'll go ahead and get started with just a couple of minutes behind. I do know that Steve, or Sean will be about half an hour late, he'll be here at five, and then I have not heard from Steve Caffey, so hopefully he'll be joining us. I think we'll get started. Carter?
Thank you.
Anything for follow-up?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I do not have anything to follow up that I can...
Anybody have anything they want to? Yeah?
If I may, I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but it's concerning the meeting from last week. We got a very well-written letter from Tracy Belzer, and I analyzed it, read through it, and I stand corrected as far as, excuse me, the pace of, this is totally within the realm of where we should be. And I'm sorry I brought you heartache and heartburn with the budget coming up, but
No problem.
This is more than reasonable. I think at some point we may have to look a little further into the grave study and make sure that it's on point, because I think it's lacking in a few areas. But that is a discussion for a different time and not for this, so we're probably going to whip right through that, I imagine, so...
No problem, no problem. Thank you.
Heartburn gone?
Very much so.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Good, good.
Thanks.
Anybody else have anything they want to follow up on from last week? Okay, great. Move on. Chris Navarro, art installation. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Navarro is here tonight. Many of you are very familiar with his work, in that he's got a number of pieces throughout our community. He is proposing another piece, the likes of which I'm sure looks a lot like this, I would suppose, that potentially would be located on city property. And so my request to Mr. Navarro was to come and make the case to all of you, to see if in fact you would like to move forward with us doing some research pertaining to locating a piece similar to this on city property. And so I would tell you from the onset, not having looked into this at all hardly, that probably the space, and you can see a little bit of the reference there, but with the people on the, inside the piece there, that land that would be adequate to accommodate a sculpture of this magnitude probably would only be the event center. And again, that's without having really looked, that's without having done a lot of research on this, because I didn't really want to do that until you guys were comfortable that something like this would be appropriate for city land. So that really is the question tonight, if you're comfortable with that. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I would defer the floor to Mr. Navarro.
Great. Chris?
Thank you for your time today. Yeah, this is a maquette sculpture of what would be called Windhenge. This is designed after Stonehenge, and this is going to take up about a half acre of space, just the sculpture itself. And the outer layer would be, you know, depending on how much, you know, with parking and everything. And I've got a short video that kind of talks about it, so let me just start this video to kind of show you the concept of it. After reading an article about the problem of disposing of obsolete wind turbine blades into my hometown's landfill in Castle Hill, I was taken back, not only by the scope and size of this problem, but by the image of a large bulldozer burying these blades, covering them with dirt, never to be seen again. The blades of wind turbines can be from 120 feet to 219 in length. The 120-foot blades weigh around 12,000 pounds and cost roughly $100,000 to $125,000 each, and have an estimated life cycle of 20 years. Obsolete wind turbine rotor blades are a problem, because they are made with the use of glass and carbon fibers, and are extremely difficult to recycle at the present time. Thousands of tons of rotor blade waste materials are expected to arrive at waste reception centers in 2020. Spanning a wind turbine blade is not an easy task. Traditionally, they are cut into big sections. Using a large saw, they are cut into 40-foot lengths. Researchers are currently now searching for ways to keep thousands of tons of blades out of the landfills. Seeing these large blades being buried in a landfill caused me to finally to kick into gear and find a way to repurpose these obsolete blades. I wanted to turn them from unwanted garbage into beautiful pieces of art. My first design was Tomorrow the Sun Will Rise Again, and it was an inspirational concept, but only repurposed nine turbine blades. How could I upscale more blades and make art on a grander scale? Coming up with more ideas and concepts, I would be able to repurpose hundreds of more obsolete blades. My next design, Starburst. This monumental sculpture would be constructed using 18 obsolete wind turbine blades into a spiraling circular design, with the blades representing the emanating rays of light as they are diverging up and outward, like the fash of light produced by an exploding star. The Starburst symbolism deals with man's cosmic union and the strength derived from such a connection. Cathedrals are known as a social space where people come together. The sculpture Wind Cathedral would be created using full-length wind turbine blades. The base of the blades would be set deep into the ground using concrete and steel to hold them in place. The blades would then be angled and attached at the top, configured in an A-frame design. This composition of the sculpture could vary with the number of blades being used. The image I have displayed now is a study of the sculpture. It is created with a layout arrangement using 12 full-length blades. This will give this monument heights of well over 100 feet. This structure, by its sheer size and grandeur, would represent a worldly spiritual hour in which one can find beauty and meaning in everyday life, to simply noticing how magnificent and miraculous things can be. A larger design I created is inspired after the famous Stonehenge, the 5,000-year-old prehistoric monument in Wiltshire, England. Stonehenge's unique circular ring of masses standing stones is one of the world's most famous prehistoric monuments. The mysterious structure of Stonehenge is known as a legendary and magical place of mystical healing. It is a place where the spirit of man and land connect with the ancestral ancient beliefs revolving around the sun calendar. Stonehenge, with its stone circle design, has long been considered a symbol of peace and unity. It also represents the circle and cycle of life. Windhenge would be composed of using 40 blades, cutting them into sections and setting them in a circular outer ring of 30 columns and 108-foot diameter. It is modeled in scale and designed after the original Stonehenge. Rescuing obsolete wind turbine blades from a landfill is symbolic in many ways, because the use of these blades not only represents the wind and its invisible power, but also conveys the spirit and vital breath of our universe. Have you noticed the overall abstract design of most of these sculptures is a map of the circle? The circle expresses the power, strength, energy, and the cycle of life the sun represents. The wind and the sun personify a clean, renewable energy source that can be harnessed by man and help reduce the impact on our environment. Repurposing obsolete wind turbine blades and saving them from the landfills and turning them into beautiful works of art is my dream. It is also my belief this inspirational concept will be like a single drop of water into the palm of the earth, causing ripples that will radiate out across the country, because it takes only one person, one moment, one idea to start a ripple of change that creates a difference in this world. Well, that's it. That kind of gives you an overall basis of what it is. So, you know, there's only three landfills that I've been told in the United States that are taking wind turbine blades. Casper's, one of them, there's one in Texas, one in Iowa. So Next Air Energy has made the commitment that they're not going to put any of their blades into the landfills. So that's why I've been working with them, because they want to find a way to repurpose these blades if they can, and they like this concept, and I'm working with them. This was the first original design. I cast this one in a bronze sculpture. It's Tomorrow the Sun Will Rise Again, and this is the other one, Starburst, and then this is Wind Cathedral. This would be a pretty impressive one. It would be, you could even drive cars through this. This is Wind Lodge. It was kind of designed after teepee lodges. And then this is Windhenge. And this is the original Windhenge. You can see it's been deteriorating over the 5,000 years it's been up. It draws over 800,000 visitors a year. And then this is Carhenge. This is in Alliance, Nebraska. I don't know if any people have been there, but it's out in a cornfield, kind of out nowhere. And it's, the city of Alliance owns the sculpture now, and I talked to the city of Alliance, because I had questions about, you know, where it brings, how many people come. They have a car counter in there that says they brought 114,000 people there last year. They maintain it, and they have a $65 maintenance fee, and then they have a gift shop out there, and they say that they sell everything, shirts and things that bring people in. They said it's been really good for their community. Of course, Alliance is only a town of 8,200 people. It says it stops, makes people stop, and they come into Alliance and shop and spend money there. So this is the actual concept. This is the maquette, the photograph of it. And those people in there kind of will show the scale of it. The outer ring is made out of 30 columns, and those columns would be 15 feet in height, and then the interior column, the tall one, is 25 feet, and they're staggered off. And this would be a very close representation of the original Stonehenge before it deteriorated. And as you can see, this is the design that would be, the blades would be cut, and then they would be stabbed into each other on the top circle. And this is how the old Stonehenge was put into place. And it's hard to believe, 5,000 years ago, how those men without any hydraulic equipment could raise those and lay them on there. So what they did is they would dig them into the ground and then stand them up, and then place them over there. Now, this concept is going to be made out of a ring that'll be dug into the ground, and these will be buried probably four to five feet into the ground with concrete platforms, and that will anchor each of them. And then they'll be cut off where they're going to be 15 feet over the top of the ground, and then the outer ring will be the other parts, because they're stair-stepped away where they'll slide into each other. And also on the top of the blades, Next Air Energy said that they will put solar panels onto the top of them, so it'll all be self-sufficient, and that the solar panels will provide all the lighting for the sculpture. Now, Next Air Energy, I've been working with them for about a year and a half or more, and they have, it's the largest energy company in the world. They're based out of Jupiter, Florida, and they have over 14,000 people that work for them. You know, Wind Energy, you know, you can see it, it's in Wyoming's future. They're building all kinds of wind turbines and putting more of them up. And Rocky Mountain has committed a $2 billion investment in new Wyoming wind transmissions for the next few years. So I know there's a lot of controversy about, I'm not trying to talk about the benefits or not, I'm just trying to find a way to repurpose these obsolete wind turbine blades. This is the idea that I came up with. James All with Next Air Energy, in fact, he met with the city here about a year ago. I believe he met with a few people that are here, like the mayor and the city manager. And he's somebody that the city can reach out to and contact and see about their commitment, because Next Air Energy said that they'll bring the blades. The blades won't be from Wyoming, they'll be coming probably from Iowa. They're taking down a big farm right now, and they don't want to put their blades into the landfills, because they think it's just bad publicity for them, and I can see that. So they made the commitment that they're not going to bury their blades. So Casper would be the first city to ever create a monumental sculpture, repurposing these blades. I think this is a real positive story. I mean, it would save 40 wind turbine blades destined for the landfills, but they're not putting those in. So Casper would receive, I think, a lot of national, international press coverage for creating this. I think this would be quite a, I mean, if you could visualize this, you know, you'll be able to walk through the sculpture. And it's going to be a large sculpture that you can even have, I don't know, events there. I'm just planning on building it wherever I can. And I first approached Casper College, and they turned it down, saying that they thought that they'd bring too many people to the campus and it'd be disruptive for them. That was the reason they gave me for not moving forward on it. So I've come to the city of Casper to see if they'd be interested in sponsoring it, because all Next Air Energy really wants is the land. They'll provide the funding for building it and for the blades. I also do, I'm going to do a book about it. I've written four books, and I brought a few of them here to set out, and then I'm going to do a documentary film about the whole project. I think this will give a lot of publicity for Casper. I've been a professional sculptor for over 35 years. I've created over 35 monuments. I don't know, I've worked with some people here. I worked with the DDA on two sculptures, The Joy of Life and 20% Chances Across the Courthouse. This is just some of the, I mean, I'm doing 180-degree turn from anything that I've done. I've never been an abstract sculptor before, but Casper's my hometown, and I don't, I want to leave as many monuments as I can before I leave this world, so I thought I would try Windhenge here. I hope Casper doesn't turn me down, but I'm going to build somewhere. And that's why I've come to you today, to get your, see if you guys want to move forward with this. I see a lot of upside. I don't see a lot of downside in doing this, but I've, you know, I've been a sculptor a long time. You need to be an optimist and an artist, so... So that's my presentation to you, and if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Yeah, Chris?
So first off, before we could put it up at the event center, we've got to get through that study first and find out what plans we have for that land before we just say, "Go ahead and build it there." And we've spent money in, well, the advance Casper has, into doing that, so we're going to have to really look at that first, I think. But secondly, I was under the impression that this was going to help alleviate our landfill by pulling them out, but that's not the case. We're just bringing in more blades, right?
No, the Next Air Energy, those are Rocky Mountain's powers, the one who gave the blades. That surf farm they put in, Rocky Mountain's a different, I mean, they work with Next Air Energy, but those are their blades.
Right, but what I'm saying is, this isn't going to alleviate what's in our landfill. We're going to be bringing in different blades to do this.
Yeah, those blades wouldn't be usable anyways. I went out and looked at them. They're all, they cut them up and then they just throw them off the trucks. They're all damaged by the time they get here. These are going to be blades that are going to be taken down and taken good care of and in good condition to be, to build this. You couldn't build them with those ones that are out there. Those are already gone, too far gone as far as, you know, using them as something like a piece of art.
Well, I'll tell you, I'm not overly artistic, and I'm not into stuff like this, but I think it's a fantastic idea. And I think if you can get a place to take it, you could probably be building these all over the country, I would imagine, you know?
Well, that's my idea is, you know, if I get one built, I think it'll start a chain reaction. I've come up with five different designs. I think this is the coolest design of the five.
Well, since you're from here, it makes sense that we should, we should have one here, but finding a place for it's the other...
And I'm not sure about the land. I mean, you know, the footprint of this is actually a half acre. The actual sculpture will take up a footprint of one-half of an acre. But you're going to need some auxiliary places for parking and everything like that. If you look at the Carhenge in Alliance, Nebraska, that's not a very big area that they have there.
But who pays for all this? Who pays for the parking? Who pays for all of it? The concrete, the, I mean, you're talking...
Well, the concrete, the sculpture is going to be, Next Air Energy is, it should be that they will fund the building of the sculpture, but once the sculpture's built, they're going to, you know, they'd become the property of the city, just like Alliance took over the property of Carhenge.
So then we've got parking lots to build, sidewalks to put in, infrastructure, maintenance. I mean, that could be a substantial amount of money.
I'm sure that, you know, there will be some costs in there, but I'm sure, like, you know, Rocky Mountain Power, I talked to them, they have financial grants that they would be involved in this. In fact, they gave a $7,500 grant to this, what it was through the Nickel Lason, because I first approached them about putting that star, Tomorrow the Sun Will Rise Again, and then I was working with Ann Ruble then, and then she left, the new director, and he said that they didn't have the space to really do it, but they kept the $7,500. I told him to keep it, and it was a grant. And I'm sure there's a lot more grant money out there to help build the infrastructure. I don't see this being a big expense for Casper. I think it'll bring people to the town, and I think there's ways to make money with the sculpture once it's up.
I don't disagree with you. I'm just playing devil's advocate.
I understand. I'm just trying to answer your questions.
Lisa?
For starters, I think this is a great idea. Carter, do we by chance have land available that's not involved in that current study that we're doing by the Trail Center? That it could tie in closer to the Trail Center and maybe that parking lot, so maybe then if we had a visitor that they could go to the Trail Center and then this as well, and then we're not infringing all the way into the event center?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, I appreciate that question, and I would tell you, the Trail Center probably would not be interested in co-locating this work to be used from their parking lot, or to be accessed from their parking lot. The reason I happen to know that is because I did ask that question in the event that, you know, because it's a nice paved parking lot, they get a lot of visitors, this would, you know, be right there for people to engage with. They thought it was so far apart with respect to the mission that they have and the types of art that they support, they just didn't view it as being commensurate with what they would otherwise pursue. So I would say if indeed we wanted to use the event center property, we should probably orient it towards those dirt parking lots that we have, more towards the, I guess it would be the northwest portion of our campus over there, if that was an area at all of interest to you. And again, keeping in mind, besides the conversation I had with the Trail Center, that is the sum total of research I've done to try to figure out where this might be best located.
Carter, I'll get you, Amber.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Chris, for the presentation, well-put-together video. I'm in agreement with my colleagues. It's a cool idea. Couple things. First off, only because I feel it's my obligation to mention it, because anytime we talk windmills in this community, it gets brought up about the huge waste of them going to the landfill. It is wasteful. I'm glad to see, you know, the idea of repurposing windmill blades, but I did, we did get $700,000 in fees for the disposal of that, and Sidney Langton, our solid waste manager, said that it's the most non-toxic inert substance that we have buried up there, and so for the folks that, you know, clutch their pearls anytime we talk about burying a windmill blade, the city was reimbursed, you know, quite fairly for it, which is why I supported that initiative. But I do like the idea of, you know, always using resources and maximizing their use and stuff like that. So I personally am curious if we have some sort of inventory of city land, or something like this would fit. I know you said you just did a few moments' research, Carter, and so it makes sense that the event center would be first of mine, but I would kind of like an inventory of the city properties where a sculpture of this size could be located. And then on the other side of the coin, I think some of your other ideas are really compelling as well, like the Wind Cathedral. That's something that would require much less of a footprint, much less maintenance, no parking spots or anything. And so I'd also be kind of curious if there's locations around town. My guess is doing it over a state highway or something would probably create a lot of issues, but if there were other streets, not state highway, that, you know, I'd be curious about an inventory for areas of town for another design like that as well, because, you know, this one, the footprint may be proved to be too large for us to accommodate or something, but perhaps one of your other designs is something that would be, something that from the city's perspective is a little bit more practical. So I'd be kind of curious to know what sort of areas we have around town available for either this design or potentially a couple of your other ones.
Carter, is that something that we can have you guys look into?
Absolutely, absolutely. We certainly can.
Other locations besides the event center, if there's other city properties that we could possibly do that?
Sure.
Well, we'd want to, not to interrupt, but we'd want to make sure it was in a, I imagine this is going to bring people. It's going to want to be in a place that's accessible, so...
I think it'll bring a lot of, I think it'll be, it'll be a destination point for some people, you know, that they'll say, hey, you know, or we're driving by Casper, we'll stop and go look at this, you know. I mean, that's what is done for Alliance, Nebraska, which like is a very small town. It's only 8,200 people. And she says it's been a good thing for their whole community. That's why the city took it over in 2013. It was a private, it was done by an artist there, and he's passed away since then. He built it out of a farm, out in a cornfield. I mean, it's not even that close to, you know, Alliance. It's a few miles out of town. It's brought a lot of people to them. I mean, they have billboards on their highway, you know, mentioning its people, and the people come to it. I'm pretty impressed at a bunch of junk cars stacked on top of each other for 100...
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think I'd be going to see it, but this I would.
Well, you know, it's hard, you know, as an artist, I try to visualize things, and I close my eyes and I visualize I walking through this thing. It's going to be very impressive. I mean, you can see a lot of things, I mean, even making like a music video there, commercials being photographed there. I mean, that's what they've been doing with Carhenge, they had some of that, so... I think this is just a big benefit. I mean, Casper's my hometown. I want to build it here first. I mean, this is why I've tried, Casper College was my first try for this, and then they passed on it. I thought it'd bring too many people. I didn't think it'd be that, you know? I mean, I mean, I don't even know why I'm into this so deep. I just got in my head to do this, and it's taken up a lot of my time, a lot of my energy, but I want to see it through. It's a 180-degree turn from my realism, but it's a, it's a, it's a great concept, a great idea. That's why I want to share it with you today.
Amber?
Thanks. I have a few thoughts. I think, as people have said, I think the idea's really interesting, and I love the creative repurposing. I think it's, it's a great example to set and a kind of a vision to incorporate into our community. My thoughts generally, I think, you know, if we ask today for some further thought to be given to it, a few things that I think should be considered would be a more in-depth understanding of what, what maintenance would be and what other type of infrastructure would be required around it, you know, as we've, we've got a sculpture out front that we're currently working on maintaining, and, you know, that's just, I think, something that maybe we don't think about enough when we start to embark on these types of projects. So a long-term view of what the maintenance would look like, I think, would be important. I'm a little leery about committing land up by the Ford Wyoming Center, only because we've talked about that land now for what feels like more projects than we would be able to do up there. And so I want to make sure that we, you know, that we're getting the best use out of that land to benefit the most people that we can, and this, I'm not saying this is or is not that thing, I just want to make sure we're looking at that holistically. And then more broadly, I think if we're wanting to embark on some sort of public art installation, which I love and would be very enthusiastic to see, some sort of public art initiative from the city, I do feel like there should be sort of a more robust process around that as well. I think that's an area where citizen engagement should be weighed, and there should be some sort of opportunity for folks to give input about what type of public art they'd like to see in our community, if we're going to dedicate land to it and city resources. I don't know that it's proper for us just to say like, well, we like this art, so let's put that there, versus having some mechanism to get public input on this project or any collection of projects that we may be considering. So I want to think about that as well. But with all that said, I certainly think it's worthy of continued research and to get some of those details mailed down. I also think a conversation with the energy company, so that we have some more like firm, firmed-up view of what they might be willing to contribute would be helpful to me as well.
Any other thoughts or questions? Yeah, Bruce?
Just one. I think we need to look at this a little differently, because this is not an initiative. This is a, an artist who came to us with a project in mind that he wants to do. And so that's completely different than us putting out a, you know, an idea to the community. This is, in my mind, this is different. This is a man who's got a project in mind that wants us to consider, and I think we look at it that way also. I don't think we, I don't think we run everything by, everything that comes in here. I don't think needs to be run by our community. I think, I think we do have a right to say yea or nay to something like this, although I'm not opposed to getting community input. I just want to be really careful on that line, that from an initiative to a private entity coming to us and saying, "Here's something I'd like to do," so, because they're two totally separate things, in my mind.
Amber?
Yeah, and I, I think that maybe that's the, where I'd like to see a little bit more discussion, is if we're going to get land, do we, do we want to see it go out for, to get a broad spectrum of ideas, or do we feel like we're going to get land and this is the consideration? So yes, it's, I just think that if we're going to put land on the line, like how would we like to see that process work? I think we could structure it any way we want, obviously, but...
Right.
Well, there's not many public art projects out there that are going to be funded by a private company, you know, that, you know, Next Air Energy is going to pay for this, which is going to be a substantial amount of money, you know, just to build this and just truck all those blades from the fields that are going to be coming in, you know. I mean, you know, I found this, you know, my whole career, I've been doing this for a long time, and I've done a lot of public monuments, and you're not going to please everybody. You just not. So I try not to think too far into that. I just try to build something beautiful and help other people see the beauty in it.
I would, I would say if, if, if you came to us with that junk car outfit and wanted land for it, I'd be vehemently opposed to it personally.
Yeah.
This is more appealing to me. I'm just saying, but I, we can't afford to have a study every time something like this comes either, but I'd sure like to get an idea of how many people that would bring to town. The college obviously told you they think they'd have so many people that it would disrupt what they have going on up there. And if that's the case, and we have an opportunity to have something like this, it's really going to bring that many people to our town, that seems like a win. it's really going to bring that many people to our town, that seems like a win. Where, I mean, we're always looking for, to try to be a destination and if this is truly going to bring that many people to town, we'd be foolish not to consider it.
You know, and if this one's successful, you could build a, you know, some of those other designs. I, I mean, this is the one design that I think uses the most blades. It's got a large, but you'd be able to actually interact with the sculpture, which makes it a really cool thing to walk through and actually be inside the sculpture. There's not many sculptures.
When you talk about driving, put it on top of the police station. Do you see that sucker from Landry?
Antennas on top of there.
Put your antennas on top of there. You could talk to the moon.
Lisa.
So I think that what he's done is a little bit different than what a lot of other people do is that he brought us something he's wanting to do, but he also found a funding source. So that is something that we're not even having to consider on how we to do that. So by him providing a funding source, which is a substantial amount of money that it's going to cost to put something like this together, I think that we should do our due diligence to find an adequate piece of land because I do think that this would be good for Casper and be a great tourist attraction that we, we lack. And so just something more to kind of keep people here and give them some other things to look at. So I do think that we should probably look for an adequate space for this.
Joy.
I said it.
Yeah, I think this is a really, really cool and creative idea too, so I definitely support investigating. I mean, I think the questions are very relevant and good. And I, I just wonder, you know, this might be a point of inspiration too where, you know, there's a great opportunity, it's funded. I'd be curious to get really specific on just how much land, what we would need to accommodate it. But I think then there might be a way to then couple that with, you know, telling the story of how this came about and then maybe seeking, you know, maybe there are others who will be inspired by this and want to create some sort of initiative around it. Who knows what could kind of ripple from it, but I think it's a really good idea. So I have friends who have driven to Carhenge, which blows my mind, but it happens, so he's right.
Bruce? Well, just the last thought is, as a business person, I'm looking at this and you have funding for it. It's a no-brainer for the, for Next Era. It's a no-brainer for them. They're going to have to either pay $700,000 to somebody to put them in the ground or they're going to pay you $700,000 to build this, so.
It's coming in a lot less than that.
What I'm saying though is that's what it would cost them to get rid of blades. And so it's a win-win for them. They're recycling. It puts them at the forefront of their industry saying, look at what we're doing and we have people building these things. And that's why you're getting the funding. So it is, it's, it's a pretty unique situation you find yourself in.
It was the very first public monumental art made from wind turbine blades in the world.
It'd be the first of very many, I'm sure.
I think once it's gone and it's successful, I think, that's why I've been devoting so much time to this.
Well, I'm with Lisa. I, I would love to see it, so.
Amber.
I wonder if we might be able to reach out to our friends at Visit Casper to get a sense of the numbers of tourists. They have a lot of ways that they calculate these things with partners in other communities that don't have this or Carhenge, but may have some sort of public art or sculpture that, that they track to give us some perspective.
Cool, good idea.
Is there a timetable? My last question. Is there a timetable on this, Chris?
Well, I've been working on this thing for about a year and a half and I've been working with Next Air Energy for about that long too. And, you know, I want to see something happen out of it. But there's no timetable. I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to get somebody to say, yeah, this is a good idea. Let's see if we can move forward on this.
Well, what I, what I meant by asking if there's a timetable, can you afford us the opportunity to allow our city manager and his staff to do some research on land? And maybe we can get some numbers from Visit Casper so that we can make a more informed decision? Do you have enough time to allow us to do that?
Sure. I mean, this is my hometown. I've got plenty of time. But you know what? I mean, this thing needs to be constructed in the good weather months, I believe, you know. And like I said, I'm just trying to present this because I want to see it done.
So it sounds like to me that's got support from Council, Chris, for us that were interested, number one, to look for land other than the event center, but possibility of the event center is in that mix still. But I think we're looking at also the study that's still going on up there, but other areas within Casper, Petrona County, or Casper area, rather, that we can utilize, look at Visit Casper to talk about how that impact could be for tourists and so forth. And I'm missing something else, sort of.
Well, one question that I had, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind my posing this to, to Chris. It sounds like the council is interested in looking at this as kind of a, an iconic piece that, that would have significant impact and, and be something that would draw people to the area, if I'm understanding correctly. But the problem is that it will only be that way if indeed it's the only one that's built of this kind. And so if we've got one in Casper and one in New Mexico and one in Florida and one in, that are all called Windhenge, I don't think it has the same appeal.
What a great point.
I hadn't thought that deep into it yet. I mean, it's a big problem in Europe, you know. They have a lot of wind turbine blades there. They don't know what to do with it too. I mean, I'm hoping to, to build some of these, you know, everywhere, to be honest with you, not just Casper. I mean, as far as the Windhenge design, that's something I can look forward, you know. I haven't really thought about it, to be honest.
It sounds to me like you're more interested in having an exclusive on it, which makes perfect sense to me. Because like you said, if there's one here and there's one in Scotts Bluff and there's one in Billings and we've lost the entire allure of what we were hoping for.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's a great thought.
Chris has asked something that the city can look at saying, we, I mean, the exclusive, exclusive for Windhenge.
I mean, you've got all these other. Chris, you've got all these other designs. You've got all these other designs. You don't have to do another Stonehenge.
How about if it, if it made, this one would be the only one in the United States. How's that sound?
That would be appropriate, I would think.
Because I, I mean, really, it's a huge problem in Europe too. And I think, you know, like Germany, they got a lot of these blades they don't know what to do with because they don't have the open land that Wyoming has.
I think our concerns would be within the United States borders. Or even east coast versus west coast or something like that, but.
So Carter, can we put this on after, do some research and come back and report that and invite Chris back?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. And as a matter of fact, in the meantime, if, if indeed we do have the opportunity to come back and visit with you, which it sounds like you're open to, I'd like to have Mr. Alt visit with us as well to, to, so we can get that level of commitment from him and, you know. And I'll tell you, you know, my, my temptation would be to want to co-locate this, this, this piece next to existing infrastructure. And, you know, so that we don't have to create a new parking lot that we have to rebuild in ten years and flatwork and lighting and all that kind of thing. Although maybe lighting will be part of the design as well, but.
Well, he said that, you know, he has lots of solar panels that they want to repurpose.
Right.
And he said he would provide the solar panels and the solar panels would all be on top of it. And you wouldn't be able to really see them because they'd be on the, because, you know, they're going to be fifteen feet up. But he talked about putting the solar panels on the outside.
So if council is open to those kinds of options, that would be what I'd be inclined to want to find for you. You know what I mean?
Okay, awesome. Council question, Chris?
Just one more observation. I'm in total agreement with all the remarks that have been made. I just wanted to reiterate that I do like this design. I think it limits our options though. So I, I'd be curious to know, again, going back to the kind of inventory of other areas. I'm personally interested in like the Wind Cathedral design. What parameters are we working under as far as having things above roadways? State-owned, city-owned? I'm just curious to learn more about that myself. I don't know if anyone else shares that interest, but.
You want one of these over the gateway to the city, kind of like a St. Louis arts thing? What are you thinking here?
It'd be cool to drive through, man. Be like a Wyoming zone.
Andrew just put his glasses on. I think he's taking it serious.
He's writing, how can we make this happen?
Can we redo the, the overpasses that we've already agreed with the state? I'm kidding.
Well, if you mean about 120-foot blades, you know, the, the span of it'd probably be, you know, anywhere from seventy feet to eighty feet wide. You can drive a lot of things through there and it'd go straight up. And then you can make as many as you want and, you know, it depends on engineering and burying them. You know, you bury them and cement them into place and you bond them up on top.
It also depends if they're going to keep paying for you to keep doing it because they got to pay to get rid of them, right?
I think Next Air Energy wants to be, you know, they want the positive press that's going to come from this, you know. They don't want to have people talking about the damage it's doing to the wildlife and the things like that, you know. That's just all negative press. You know, I know, I, I personally would not want a big wind turbine blade right next to my house, you know. I can understand people that, you know, don't want that, but I'm just trying to find a way to repurpose these. When I saw that picture, it just looked a spark in me and my, my mind just went off to this thing and, you know, I've been putting a lot of effort into it because I just got to follow it.
It's very creative.
Well, thank you, Chris. We appreciate it.
I tell you what, I'll leave all the stuff here so I don't mess up your meeting and I'll come back tomorrow and pick it all up. Is that all right? You'll help me load it up?
I will.
Thanks, Chris. We appreciate it. We'll be in touch. Thank you. All right, moving forward, personnel budget follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. And Councilman Nell, thank you for your comments at the beginning of the meeting opportunity to cite them. I appreciate that. The, the question that we took to heart with regard to what we believed council wanted us to look into was with regard to the sixty-nine folks in the organization who would get somewhere in the range of zero to somewhere under eight percent or eight and a half percent as it relates to what we've recommended by way of wage increases and COLAs for the first half of the fiscal year coming up. In other words, starting July one. And so with that, you know, there are folks in that array of sixty-nine people who are in the category of what we would call red line status, which means they are actually making over and above what their wage range provides for them. So if they're making whatever their wage range is, they're, they're actually making over and above what it is that that position would ordinarily require. And so that's why in some cases we actually have people who would make nothing over and above the, the turn of the calendar on July one. So, and then there are those who will make anywhere from that category all the way up to close to eight percent, depending on how in fact they fall within their wage range. And so that's the challenge we're facing.
What do you mean? I, I thought everybody got the COLA.
Mr. Mayor, there are thirteen people who make so much more than their wage range that they're assigned to with their position, that a COLA wouldn't even impact their salary. Because again, if their wage range is here, they are here already and, and the, and the COLA does not move it up enough to catch up with their actual salary.
I see.
Not a common phenomenon, but there are thirteen people who, who that would characterize their relative position to what it is we're recommending right now. One of the things though that I wanted to make clear to you too, that you do find in your, in your budget message, is that indeed I do plan to come back to this council toward the end of the calendar year to talk to you about the possibility of another COLA infusion. Possible. That would mean, of course, that we have to hit a certain revenue benchmark before I feel comfortable, you know, suggesting something like that. But the reality is, if we do have that opportunity, that particular installment, if it can occur, would actually take care of all of the folks that we're talking about here, including the red line folks. And so there is that possibility that I think would be a ray of hope, at least for, for those folks who are outside of their wage range and for those who are so highly placed in their current wage range that they're very, very close to being maxed out. So I, I would have you keep that in mind because it is my hope that I'll be able to make that, that advocacy to you toward the end of the calendar year. So with that, if, if indeed council does want to look at options and alternatives and so forth, we're prepared to talk about those this evening. And if indeed it does have some significant impact to the budget, we're prepared to demonstrate what that would look like as well. As, as I mentioned last week, when, when this possibility was brought forward, we are kind of in a delicate balancing position right now, particularly as it relates to the general fund. And without a doubt, when you build operational costs into the budget, we do have to find ways to reconcile that from a revenue standpoint as well. And so be aware of that. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions from anybody? Amber.
Thank you for this memo. I think it, it answered a lot of questions and what it, it did, made, made, made me think of one more question too. And that is, if I, I'm interested in the thought process behind strategy of, if somebody's been promoted within the last six months, rather than, and, and they receive some sort of wage increase as a result of that promotion, offering them now the, the difference between that wage increase and a full step. Because I see a promotion as like a vertical change and a weight, a step as a lateral change. So I'm wondering why, why we're taking the difference of the vertical move away from the lateral move with the step based on the fact that they got a vertical increase in their promotion. Does that make sense?
Yes, I think so. I think so. I may need to pitch a lifeline in order to answer that question fully, yeah, because I, I can get lost in this stuff pretty easy myself. But let me take a stab at it and then I may need to have you help, help out. But in my estimation, there's a couple, a couple reasons for that, that type of a policy approach. For one, generally speaking, when we promote folks and, and actually, kind of funny, we, we did have fourteen people who were in the red line category. But since the time we talked last week to today, we had one promoted that took that person out of that red line status into a position where some wage attainability was back in, in focus for that individual. And that's exactly what we like to see, people promoting in the organization so they create opportunities for themselves and so on and so forth. Anyway, to get back to your question, when people promote, they typically will get a five percent increase. That's not always the case, but generally speaking, that's what we try to do. And so if indeed we've got that situation happening and four months later we want to provide some other level of increase, then for that individual, we can create compression issues with their supervisor. And so, you know, that puts them into that potentially ninety, eighty-five to ninety percent salary proximity that makes us nervous. And so that would be one rationale, if you will. The other would be, is that generally speaking, what happens when people increase through their wage ranges as quickly, they end up getting maxed out sooner than, than they would through a natural progression standpoint. And then all of a sudden, they are one of our sixty-nine and they're wondering, hey, how come I'm being left out of this so rapidly? They forget however, that they were given multiple raises within a short period of time. And then all of a sudden, we're, we're again creating compression issues or creating equity issues and, and the like. So it, it's always a balance that we try to strike when it comes to wages and promotions even so that we can keep people progressing appropriately. Tracy, did I miss anything in that response? Thank you.
Other questions for Carter? Yeah, Bruce?
Just a comment. This all started because I, I feel like our people are our greatest asset.
Absolutely.
And before this memo came out, I was feeling like we had some people that were being left behind. And I, I didn't think it was fair and I didn't, I didn't want them not feeling valued by us. And so, but after the memo, which was very detailed and very informative, thank you, Tracy, it just, it's more clear now and it is fair, in my opinion. And so I wouldn't have any problem looking in an employee in the eye who may not be getting a raise and saying, listen, you know, it's, it's pretty fair. So, or at least from what I see. Is that a fair grasp on what I'm reading?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I absolutely agree with your, your assessment there. In, in an organization, particularly larger organizations where there's just a multiplicity of wage ranges and people's individual situations with respect to their individual wage range, there are going to be folks who are maxed out. There are going to be. there are going to be folks who are maxed out, there are going to be folks who find themselves in a red line status. Generally speaking, that is not a new condition or characteristic with regard to their knowledge of their salary and where they're at, you know. So it is very, very challenging to find a balance that makes certain that nobody's maxed out and nobody's red lined. And it becomes even more challenging when you're talking about 500, 700 or more employees.
And for the public's knowledge, when we're talking about somebody being maxed out, that's a market max. It's not, it's not, oh, we're maxed out in the city. If they were to leave the city and go to another job, similar job, anywhere in our market area, that's the top range.
Right.
So, and that needs to be explained so that people understand, even if they leave the city and go somewhere else, they're not going to find any more money than what we're paying them. We're paying our people very well that are on that edge. But with that said, I still would very much like to get the Graves study put back into a work session where we can really get into that. And I said, because there are some disparities that I found that need to be addressed and I don't think we need to pay for another study. I think we can do some tweaking of our own to get that more in line with where it needs to be. And so with that said, I'm good with this.
Appreciate it. Any other concerns, questions, comments about that? Okay. Maybe down the road, Carter, we can talk about Graves.
Absolutely. Absolutely. You bet.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Tracy. Casper Business Center.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are at the point now, now that we've made the purchase of the Casper Business Center, to begin the design phase of, you know, making that building work for the uses that we have in mind. And as you know, primarily, that would be the police department, as we've talked about quite a bit. We are also working against the backdrop of a couple of other dynamics that you're also very familiar with. We have costs rising precipitously, seems like every day, on materials and so on. We have timeline issues, you know, reconstructing or rehabilitating a building couldn't come probably at a worse time, I suppose. We are also familiar with the fact that the City Hall project came in incredibly high, much higher than we anticipated. And so we're going through a rethinking process of the City Hall project as well. And so this convergence that we are experiencing right now, we are trying to look at opportunistically as much as possible so that indeed we can use the space that we now have available to us as smartly as possible and hopefully in such a way that gets us ahead of the costs associated not only with the Casper Business Center, but also with respect to this project here. Because if indeed there are some sharing of services between these two facilities that puts downward pressure on costs to work with both, then for me, that's a pretty optimal situation. It may be pie in the sky, though, and it may be too Pollyanna and so on. And so I have to be open to that reality as I hope you will be as well. Because unfortunately, I don't think there's a real cheap avenue out of these needs. And as you will look here soon at the facility study, I don't see a lot of good news there either, as far as costs go. Although I do really like the data that that study put together. It's great data and I think you'll find that as well, albeit not great news. Anyway, so, one of the questions that many of you have had is, well, okay, we know we need to do something with City Hall. We have the opportunity, of course, to purpose the Casper Business Center as smartly as possible. Is there some opportunity to share services in either of these buildings that makes sense? And tonight, I want to give you just a little bit of a feel as to see whether or not you think we might be on the right path as far as that balance that we're looking for goes. We've tried to assemble some data that would give you some insight into that and hopefully enough to help you feel comfortable that as we kick off the design process for the business center, we're going in the right direction. We know that we need to put the police department there. We certainly have talked about putting the municipal court function there as well because that gets us out of the Hall of Justice and we get into our own building with that critical service. And I think the marriage of those two services under one roof makes a lot of sense. And so that recommendation stays, in my opinion. The other function that we would like to continue to move forward with is that of putting fire administration in that building as well. And it's certainly my hope that as it relates to training needs that both fire and police have, that indeed we can find some hegemony there from a facility standpoint and build that space that could be mutually shared there as well between those two departments. And that would be what it is that I would recommend we view this building through the lens of, in this case, particularly as it relates to similar training needs that fire and police might have. The other advantage is for keeping fire administration in the Casper Business Center, we can locate them in such a way in that building that they have a bird's eye view of their chief facility being right across the intersection. So I think there's a lot of opportunity there as well, although I don't know that watching the building is all that important for them. They at least have that proximity, right?
Yes. It's nice to be close.
I think, and I would agree, too, with the chief, that the ideal would probably be co-locating administration with their, you know, inside their central service facility. But I also believe that having them right across the intersection is probably not a bad alternative either, particularly if indeed we want to rebuild Station 1 in as cost-effectively a manner as possible. So those two services co-located with the police department, I think is really important to do. I would also say that we really do need to work towards putting dispatch back under one roof with police as well. I think many of you have agreed that that's a good goal to have, too. The Casper Business Center is uniquely built to where it already has a lot of technological advantages that many of our other sites did not have. And so I think that technology hub that the business center already is works very, very well towards putting dispatch back under the same roof as the police department. The other thing that I think makes a lot of sense, particularly with regard to that characterization of the business center, would be with regard to our own IT functions that we house in this building right now. For those of you who have, you know, been through IT's offices and so on, you're aware that a lot of that space is taken up with a fairly sophisticated server room that, you know, sucks up quite a bit of their space right in the center of their operating area. In fact, you probably are aware that the offices are kind of in a horseshoe around that server space, which is, in my opinion, particularly given where we may be right now with today's technological needs and space and so on, oversized for what it is that we may be needing to build into the future. So my hope is that we can also move IT out of City Hall and co-locate IT into the Casper Business Center. I think there's a lot of synergy there. I think there's a lot of technological overlap that perhaps could exist with regard to those two functions. And it just so happens that dispatch and PD are one of IT's biggest clients from an internal service standpoint as well. And what that does is, it does free up quite a bit of space here in this building that I hope allows us to avoid building an expansion to this footprint in order to accommodate the services that would then remain here in this building. And I think that may be the case. And so that's what we'd like the opportunity to look further into.
Do you want to ask, Elise?
I thought we were also moving code enforcement over to the building as well.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, we have looked at that possibility and the community development director, in concert with the police department, makes a pretty strong argument for not bringing those two positions under one, those two functions, I should say, under one oversight. We think that keeping community service, community development in this building, being a very public-facing operation in multiple ways, not just code enforcement, but from the building inspection side and building permitting side and the planning side and so on, would make more sense. And so we are suggesting that that move not take place because it does insinuate perhaps breaking code enforcement away from community development and putting it into PD. And the chief doesn't have that interest either. And so, for whatever reason, right? So we are proposing that that department remain intact and it remain in this building.
Bruce. Why would we, and I know John Henley's not here to defend himself, but I know he does not want to move, but why would we not put the city attorney's office in where the municipal court is? Why would it stay here? That logistically doesn't make any sense to me. And their footprint is maybe 1,000 square feet.
If you want to. If you don't, you don't want to speak on this behalf. Chief.
Mr. Mayor, City Manager, Council, I really don't want to speak for John Henley because I haven't been involved in any of those conversations at all. I don't have any background on fire, whether or not.
I just heard it through the wind. I didn't hear it from John.
Yeah. And I don't have any background on it whatsoever, so I probably shouldn't address that until John's here.
Let me get Dr. real quick. Go ahead, Dr.
If this is not the right time for this question, we can continue on that thread. But I think, like, in regard to that, I was just left kind of wondering, I mean, in here it says this is preliminary, and so I was just curious, like, were there other considerations? I mean, you talked about code enforcement, we talked about the attorney's office. Were there other considerations or are there other considerations about what may or may not move over there in terms of what space is needed here?
City Manager, Council, off the top of my head, just on the spot, I can think of several good reasons maybe we wouldn't want to move over there. First, we coordinate all the time with the city manager's office. We're there two or three times a day, community development, maybe even more. And keeping HR, keeping personality issues, so keeping all of us together may make more sense than moving a few prosecutors occasionally, especially if it's up in the air, there may be room for a couple offices for, and I don't know, I'm trying not to speak for everyone else, there may be just room for a couple offices for when our prosecutors and paralegals need to be over there.
I see. That makes sense.
Several just off the top of my head, but I don't know for sure.
Mr. Mayor, to weigh in with regard to what Attorney Trembach is saying, he's hitting the exact points that Mr. Henley has shared with me. And you will find in the design that comes out eventually, right, when the design is complete, that there will be space for the prosecutor and there will be space for the public defender, whomever that public defender is that comes in through the court from time to time. So there will be what I would call a satellite office for Jackie because she's over with court quite a bit. But Mr. Henley is recommending that the corpus of his office stay here, given the proximity that he thinks he needs to some of his bigger clients.
That makes sense, Will.
Then it's your question, Dr.
I was thinking more broadly beyond just your office here, but yeah, I mean, just in terms of the space that may or may not be left or if there were other considerations but some of these took precedence. I mean, more of just a holistic understanding of how that was made.
So if I could, Mr. Mayor, continue with Councilmember Southern's question here. Yes, there have been some other thoughts as well. We thought about taking all the public-facing services from this building and putting it into the Casper Business Center, given that there is the advantage of some space, there is the advantage of parking for customers, very closely located to the front door, and of course, the opportunity to design with that in mind, right? Public-facing services being sort of a one-stop shop on the one or two floors that maybe that these services would take up. After thinking about that and after talking about that further, it wouldn't appear that that would actually bring a lot of cost savings to this project and in fact, would add probably more project costs for the Casper Business Center across the street. And so the bang for the buck that we were hoping to gain probably wouldn't exist and would have the effect of dividing up departments and having primary functions for each across the street and other locations and may end up not serving the public all that much better. So we backed away from that as well. So what we are suggesting is that indeed by moving IT, by sticking with some of the original thoughts that we had pertaining to some of the other services that would be available at the business center, we would be able to design both facilities in such a way that it would serve the customer probably the most appropriately. It would not bastardize, if you will, the original concept that we had by having that building be available for public safety kinds of services. And ultimately, we think we can still work with this building and the existing footprint that we have a little more effectively as well. So that's where we're at right now, at least in terms of where we think we need to go.
Amber.
Can you tell me on this, there's a table in the memo about the current space needs and the space needs in the future. Are those space increases primarily predicated on anticipated population growth here or are there other reasons that, you know, certain, we anticipate certain future space needs that maybe we don't have today?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, that is the case. That is what you are seeing there. But the reality is, there's a couple, few factors that figure into that. Population is certainly one of them. We try to look at the industry standards as well that would drive some of that department growth despite what population might dictate and, you know, general service needs that we feel like this community may be in need of being kind of the feet on the ground right now. Chiefs, do you want to add anything to that in terms of how those factors were built into Mr. Estes' approach?
Mayor, Councilmember, excellent question. What I can tell you is that a great deal of time, face-to-face with the needs assessment facility design group, went into analyzing how much space we needed today, but also by that time date of 2030. So from a personal perspective, I can tell you that we addressed the fact that digital crime is rising very fast and that whereas I have one person assigned to it now, by the year 2030, that would not be adequate. So we really looked at the specialized functions of the police department, what the industry is saying that we need to be prepared for, and tried to incorporate that into the space needs assessment for 2030. We also looked at the data, the best projections we could give for population growth. We incorporated that into it. So it really was in-depth, it was many days of working one-on-one with the design group to kind of hone that out and be as accurate as we could. We also were very clear-cut on, we weren't padding any of these, oh, you know, we'd like to have X amount of this and X amount of that. We really fine-tuned that down so that we had the things that we were very confident on without adding extra bodies in there, extra FTEs that would then require extra
Anybody else? What do you need from us, Carter?
Mr. Mayor, if you feel like we have captured generally the appropriate direction to get the design phase started off with, that would be helpful to know. If, on the other hand, council believes there are a few things we haven't dug in deep enough to, we'd be happy to take that direction as well. Our hope is that we can get Our hope is that we can get kicked off so that by this time next year, we can come back to you with not only a design that you can approve and evaluate and that kind of thing, but hopefully be the linchpin for perhaps starting a reconstruction effort of the Business Center.
Bruce.
When you mentioned the Dispatch Center, it didn't sound like that was set in stone. And as far as I'm concerned, it absolutely has to be. One of our sales to the public was cutting out all these lease payments and heavy rent payments that we pay, and that's our biggest one.
Yep.
But it absolutely has to be in that building with the Police Department, as far as I'm concerned, because that's what we sold to the public.
Yep.
One more question. If I'm reading the memo correctly, it looks like there's still some, like, if we, if this plan moves forward and Fire, IT, Court all get planned to be in this building, there's still some balance of space left over in the building? What is our plan with that space?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, that would be considered opportunity area, if you will, for future growth and those kinds of things. We, I would not suggest that we would be designing offices for the 20 investigators we may need in 10 years, but rather the 12 or so that we have right now. And so, some of that growth that we're talking about and expansion that eventually be needed, we don't anticipate constructing at the moment in time that we come to you next year for a design approval. That's just one example, of course.
So, I guess is everybody comfortable with the direction that they're moving, what they're doing, information that's given to us?
Is there any chance that it could move along a little quicker? Why do we have to wait a year for a design when we were talking about having this thing renovated and moving into it in 18 months to 24 months? And now, we're talking about burning 12 just in design? So, is there any way to move this along and stay within the parameters of what we set up in the beginning when we agreed to do this?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I share your anxiety about the 12-month timeframe for the design. And our designers are telling us that they could be done in six months or eight months or so. I would prefer that be the case, but I'm also, you know, not optimistic that eight months is a good time for them to give you either.
Well, my big worry isn't this big push to get it done, but as time goes on, prices keep going up. And so, the longer they screw around, for lack of better words, getting us this done, the prices are going up.
Yep.
And it's just going to be more and more and more on our plate. So, that's burdensome.
I, we are on the same page with you, absolutely. I assure you. I'm giving you a year to, you know, as sort of our conservative estimate, I'm hoping it'll be six to eight months.
I haven't said a lot, but roughly, the architect that came in gave us a timeline and everything when we were in the committee. She talked in terms of by the time you got the design, the bidding process, all of that. She was looking at nine to 12 months from the get-go. That's, and then 18 months to two years of construction. That's why when everybody kept saying we were going to be moving out of there in two years, I'm going based on what she was telling us, that was not going to happen. It was going to be a three-year process. So, that's kind of, now, granted, I'm all in favor, I think, as everybody else is, of shorting this up. But that was one of the things that we were sat here and told. She sat right there where Zalima's sitting and went through that whole timeline.
I remember, but I also specifically remember her saying two and a half years from start to finish. I remember that specifically. Not a year and then another two and a half for the bill. That is not what she sold to us. Anyway, it is what it is. It's going to be what it's going to be, so.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I do have another question that's related, but slightly unrelated as well. If Council feels like this portion of direction is good to go, I would like to entertain another request.
Let's do it.
So, as you can sense, I'm having a hard time divesting, if you will, the reconstruction of our two facilities, the Business Center and the City Hall, because we are talking about moving things around to try to be as optimal as possible. Along the lines of that optimization, we should probably know that we are not going to get away with not doing something about the mechanical in this building, as well as fire suppression and electrical and those kinds of things. But from a mechanical standpoint, those kinds of pieces and parts with respect to a building project is almost the epicenter, if you will, of price increases and time delays. And so, with regard to this building in particular, we do have the opportunity to purchase the air handlers now in the face of dealing with price increases that are just around the corner and in fact, were already incurred. And so, my request to you would be, the opportunity to go ahead and make those purchases, store those pieces of equipment until we're ready to make that level of rehabilitation to this building happen, so that we can avoid those price increases in the future. I realize that I'm asking you this without giving you, you know, memos to this effect and those kinds of things. Also, understanding that the idea of dealing with HVAC in this building is probably not a new concept to all of you either. So, my question is this. Are you comfortable with us going ahead and making those equipment purchases happen to avoid those kinds of increases? Or would you prefer that we wait until we're ready to bring you a whole nother building prospectus? And go from there at that point?
Can you assure us that by the time it comes time to implement those, that they're not going to be obsolete and that we didn't buy something that's sitting in a shed somewhere that's now outdated because it took us too long to get to it? And now, we've pissed away all that money?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, that's a fair question. And I would say the answer to that question is, we will not do that. But I'd be happy to defer to Zalima, who has looked into this way more than I have, if that would help.
So, primarily, we, Mayor, Council, so primarily, we are looking at air handlers. And these are components that traditionally last decades. And so, compatibility isn't as much of a concern. But as the City Manager mentioned, the cost increases that are continually happening, as well as the time delays. I mean, some of these components, we're looking at 40 to 50 weeks before we can get them. So, even if we were to bid a project and be successful on moving forward with renovation, we may have to wait six months past when the rest of the project is done in order to get an air handler in. And so, I can give you some assurances that our mechanical design team would not spec the unit that would be obsolete in such a short period of time. We're definitely looking at longevity in this building and a renovation that could make it viable for additional four years.
So, follow-up, Carter. How much are we talking about? Do you have that money budgeted? If not, where's the money coming from?
Mr. Mayor, let me take those questions in reverse order because then I'll throw it back to Zalima for real specific detail. Okay, so, cost was one.
Is it budgeted?
What's the cost? If it's budgeted, and if it's not budgeted, where's that money coming from?
Right, yeah, yeah. Very fair question. We still have the original corpus of funding dog-eared for this project, set aside from the rest of the capital agenda that we presented to you back in May and in April. And so, that, those dollars, 2.6, are designated, they're set apart. They're inviolate until you tell us this project will never, ever happen again. And then, of course, those dollars would come back into the capital mix. So, I would anticipate using a portion of those dollars to pre-purchase, if you will, those aspects of the project. As far as what that spend would be, I would need to defer to you or Matt in that regard.
Mayor, Councilmember, don't have the exact figures with me, but we're looking at approximately 150,000 to 180,000 per unit.
And you need two?
Yes, so that would be my request. We have a unit that handles the majority of the building, and then we have a specific unit for council chambers. And that particular unit was, in the original bid that came in high, was actually an alternate. And since that time has started leaking and has given us some trouble, so it is something that we're going to have to address sooner than we were hoping. And so, the request would be that we procure both units and then plan to install them when the greater project is completed.
As a follow-up, since you're standing, this is going to save us how much over time, approximately? If we purchase them now? Because you've obviously done that work or you wouldn't have brought a request to us, right?
Right. So, again, I apologize, I did not bring documentation with me.
It's all right, I'm just looking for a guesstimate.
So, we're happy to provide that information, that would be more accurate later. Although, if it pleases the City Manager and the Mayor, perhaps Lyle could speak to that because his team has been working with us pretty closely on those estimates. Do you recall?
I don't recall specifically the price increase. I just know that we're experiencing price increases by the month. Like, they're not even guaranteeing things beyond a month out. So, the prices that we presented to Zalima, I think it's been two weeks ago already, is even questionable whether we can hold that price.
So, we can certainly do an analysis as to what expected inflation will continue to be.
I don't think it's necessary, and I don't think we need to micromanage you. I think with great certainty, you could say it's going to save us money if we buy them now.
Lisa.
So, when we had this discussion, I vaguely remember myself asking if we could buy some things in advance and do some things. So, here we are. And my question is, is are there other components that we are going to need that's going to cost us more money that we can do the same thing with?
Yep, I remember that dialogue as well, Councilwoman. And it was appropriate then, as it is now, to suggest that. As far as major components go, HVAC is definitely one of the primary drivers with respect to why we're seeing these awful increases. We were looking at that today, as a matter of fact, trying to sort of compartmentalize what some of these drivers are. And, you know, the number that stands out in my mind is the 1.9 dedicated to mechanical. Are there other major components, if I may, Mr. Mayor, that you would recommend as well, perhaps, that we could get a lead on right now?
Mayor, Councilmembers, certainly the air handlers are the biggest single units and the highest cost and the most concerned from a timeline standpoint. We could certainly evaluate if there are other high-dollar components that we think, you know, we could maximize cost savings using this strategy and evaluate that a little bit further and come with some additional recommendations, if that's what the Council pleases. I can't think of any right off the top of my head, these two being the two major that certainly rose to the top of the list. But certainly, we can look at other opportunities and see if they exist.
So, Carter, could we give the, go ahead to go with the same, move forward with the air handlers with additional information to come to the Council to say, hey, these are other items that we might need to buy in order for us to, you know, to get ahead of inflation?
That'd be great.
Okay. Is Council okay with that, if we move forward with the air handlers and then have Council, or have staff come back with some options?
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thanks, Zalima. Budget amendment number three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a fiscal year '22 budget issue, not the budget that we've been talking about more here lately with regard to fiscal year '23, but rather the final, sort of the final amendment for '22, our current year. You will know that the, you will note, I should say, that the biggest element of this amendment is the Business Center purchase made here recently in the form of about $8 million. You have given us that blessing, but we just need to make the budget adjustment necessary to accommodate that expense of this year's budget. There are other costs related, not related, other costs that we also need to deal with that mostly come with offsetting revenues as well, which is always the good news as it relates to a budget amendment and so on. But if I could turn some time over to Jill to walk us through some of the major tenants of this amendment request, I would appreciate that. And you can anticipate pending this discussion tonight, this coming forward next week, if I remember correctly.
Jill.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. As the City Manager has already said, the major portion of this budget amendment is the Business Center. So, you are seeing that $8 million sitting there. Some of the other larger appropriations, again, we do have $1.6 million that has offsetting revenue. So, that's pretty awesome there. Beyond that, we do have some new appropriations which we are requesting. A lot of these are related to items which we did not anticipate them costing so much. So, we've got a lot of extra fuel costs and those types of things. We are looking at reserves to be able to manage them. Other than that, we do have several other items which we are going to unappropriate. So, you had given us the ability to purchase a couple items in the Refuge Fund. We found that they were double-budgeted, so we are going to reduce their budget by that $878,000, so that spending authority will be removed. So, those are the major things within this budget amendment. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Jill? Yeah, Bruce.
So, if you've got offsetting revenue adjustment on the one, your new appropriations are $905,000 and your unappropriations are $878, you're only, you're talking about using reserves to cover, you're not talking about very much money.
That is correct, but it's by fund, of course. So, the unappropriation is coming specifically out of the Refuge Fund. Some of the other new appropriations would not be within that fund.
Gotcha.
Other questions for Jill? Okay. Thanks, Jill.
Thank you.
Anything else, Carter, on that?
No, sir.
That's all you need?
That's it.
Is Council okay with this moving forward? All right, facility study. Moving right along.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. This is, this study is a direct result of the Council goals that you set almost two years ago now that is the reason we are here today. I would tell you that this battery of data that you now have in the form of this study is absolutely critical with regard to capital planning pertaining to your facilities that we'll be able to use for the next 10 years or so. And so, I applaud the Council for having this foresight and requesting this study. Because as you probably have already noted, having looked through this, to some degree at least, that this builds not only a lot of data in terms of what we think our buildings might need, but also an appropriate timeframe by which to anticipate these repairs and what costs you could expect to have to meet with regard to meeting some of these physical plant kinds of needs. There are a lot of pages of data with regard to the information that's been assembled. We tried to conduct some analysis with respect to the 30 most primary buildings that we have in our inventory, not the least of which would be the building we're sitting in now. And of course, the fire stations, rec center, the event center, and so on and so on. We have a couple phases of discussion we'd like to take you through tonight. The first would be, of course, from our consultant, who has joined us virtually here. We appreciate you being here. To orient us through the volume of data that you now have created and give us some feel as to what some of this information tells us. Secondly, I would like to turn some time over to Zalima and her team to walk us through the analysis that she has put together, which looks like this, that helps prioritize our highest priorities, if you will, pertaining to the 30 buildings I was referencing earlier. And give you a suggested timeframe by which some of those most important needs that we've identified could be dealt with. Although, not necessarily inexpensively, we do think it would be a more efficient means of looking at some of these needs. And so, with that, Mr. Mayor, unless Zalima, there's other tables setting you want to do, I'd be happy to turn. I'd be happy to turn time over to our consultant.
Okay. Good evening. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can hear you all. How are you all doing today?
Good, thank you, welcome. The floor is yours.
Thanks for having me. Me and my coworker, Ricardo, will be presenting our findings to you all. He is my technical manager and he has just joined. Oh, I see the executive summary of all of you. Okay, can everybody see the report?
Yep.
Perfect. Okay. First, I'd like to start off by thanking the entire city of Casper for letting us assist you in your capital planning needs. We help as long to help out cities, universities, any government with their facility needs. We'd also think, like to thank the entire building and structures department. They helped us a lot while we're on site. They answered a lot of questions and if they didn't know any of the answers themselves, they were always quick to get on the phone and ask anyone who might know. And were very helpful. Thank you. Starting off, we would like to say that we used BOMAs life cycles. So the Building Owners and Management Association, we used their base life cycles for all your major systems. And we used a lot of their life cycles to... Ricardo, can you explain this a little better?
Sure thing. Could you pull up the Word document and I'll just kind of ask you to scroll down as you go. So this first part here just goes through all of the processes and just some general information regarding where we get the data and how we do some calculations. So like Dylan was explaining, for this specific client or this specific process, we used the BOMA life cycles. So each of the systems and some of the materials have a specific life cycle, whether it's 10, 15, 20, 25 years. And we use that to calculate their estimated replacement date for some of these systems. You'll see that in the report as well, as far as how that was done and where they fall. So scroll a little more down, Dylan. Here we have the productization of the needs. So each of the needs that we looked at, or each of the systems that we look at, we associated a priority to them. That's going to be either low and medium or high. Dylan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we gave the city of Casper the ability to kind of tweak these a little bit. We have a default matrix for these, but sometimes we end up moving some to high, some to medium, and some to low. So this kind of shows you that. I think the default matrix kind of dates to account systems that are essentially very important to the building's functionality. For instance, if you're in the middle of winter, you don't want your heat to go away. If you're in the middle of summer, you don't want your cooling to go away. Obviously, you always want to have some type of lighting in the building and your life safety or fire protection systems should always work. Things you see lower are systems that, they're more cosmetic in a way, you know, whether that's ceiling finishes or floor finishes, you know, if they don't look very good, it, you know, it's just, it's a nice sore, but it's not going to actually deter anybody from actually working in the building or being able to use the facility as it's intended uses. So scroll a little more down, Dylan. This page here is pretty important. Each of these buildings and ultimately campuses, and you'll see this, this term FCI in the executive summary over and over again, it's essentially just a fraction of all of the needs or requirements in any, any specific year divided by the total replacement value of that building. Specifically, you'll see for us, we're going to give you FCI in two different years. In this report, it's going to be the current year and then current year plus five years. As far as apps goes, you'll, I believe you'll be able to see a condition index or an FCI for every single year for the next 20 or 30 years. Just scroll a little more down, Dylan. Here is some bullet point as well, as far as what FCI is, my look, how they might be categorized, and same deal with the cost, as far as how we're getting the cost. We use ours means to create cost models for most of these buildings. And then, if anything, we'll tweak some of the cost models a little bit with some of the real data. So those cost models are parametric. That's the way that ours means more or less votes them out. You're able to enter some parameters such as square footage of the building, the amount of stories, or the perimeter of the, the building itself. And then you can extrapolate that parameter cost model to different size buildings, within reason, of course. Now, the assessment team was able to actually collect some hard data where there, that was counts for doors, windows, things of that nature, that led us tweak those models a little further with some real data instead of, you know, what you would call theoretical data on what should exist within a specific type of building. So then scroll down a little bit more, Dylan. Even below that, let's go to the first figures, that kind of shows some stuff here. A little more down. So here into this page, you have some overview of findings. These are going to be some general, I would say, rules or things to pay attention to for the entirety of the 37 or the 33 facilities that were looked at. Might be more than that, actually. Some of these are going to be just calling out things like R22 refrigerant, you know, whether those are present in the buildings that we saw or not, and the complications that come with that. Things like solder being used in piping that was installed before 1985. Pretty general statements as far as the facilities goes. Whether that's for findings like six and seven, where we're talking about the site, the general condition of the site, infrastructure in those buildings, or otherwise just general information bits to do with R22 or old solder in, in the older buildings. There's two figures here. It's going to show the FCI's at the, I guess, center level, so there's going to be two figures back to back here, actually. One is going to be the 2022 FCI as of right now, and the next is going to be the 2027 FCI's. I think 20% is what you, what we see at maximum for some of these facilities. Once you get to the 50 FCI, it's when you have to start thinking about replacing the whole building as a whole. These values can actually be changed. These are, I guess, the default values that we use, 20 and 50. So you see here, your, your different campuses are ordered by the greatest FCI to the lowest. There's only a couple in 2022 that are beyond that 20, but all of them are pretty close to that 20 FCI. If you scroll down, Dylan, there will, you'll see the 2027. Here, there's a couple more.
Yeah, there are more 2022s here. Here's.
Oh, my God, sorry, yes. So in 2027, you see that if nothing is done, a lot of more buildings then get to that 50 FCI level where replacement or complete revamp is kind of imminent. Now, explain the FCI real quick. Essentially, all the numbers you see in this report are going to be what would happen if no corrective action is taken. So you'll see the FCI's get larger throughout the years as well as the needs. We call them cumulative needs. Each year, a new need might be presented, you know, maybe your doors go bad in the next three years, so in that year you'll have an additional need that gets added on to that cumulative need. And beyond that, each of those needs and cumulative needs, they get an inflation factor associated with them. So, and you'll see that in the next few slides here, or the next few pages.
Right. And to add to that, we've also added an inflation rate for 2022, all the way out to 2042. In 2022, we're seeing 8%. 2023, we're seeing 6%. 2024, we're seeing 4%. And then 2% from 2025 to 2042. So that is also going to inflate some of these numbers that we're seeing. Turn over 10 years.
Did you want to explain any of this table?
Oh, sure. Okay. So aquatics, that I think is just going to be the aquatics building. Your bayonville building, your solid waste, building and structure building, that's actually just going to be your single building and structure building. So right now, in 2022, you're looking at an eight FCI for your aquatics building. But then in 2027, in between 2022 and 2027, we're going to have some needs come up. And then also any needs that were in 2022 are going to be inflated by those inflation rates through those years. So while you have an eight FCI here, some other needs pop up and everything else is inflated, and you get a 26 FCI, which is a little bit past that target point that you want to stay under. It's going to be the same for the rest of these buildings. Some of these, you're going to see $0 upfront. There's going to be a huge correlation between the age of the building and your needs. Once you hit that 30-year mark on a lot of your buildings, that's where your domestic water, sanitary sewer, and your branch wiring are all going to age-based, age themselves out. So after 30 years, we just age-based those. And we show that they would most likely, because of their life cycle, need some attention. It doesn't necessarily mean that they're expired, but it means that you could see some issues with them. And we show after 30 years, the full amount it will take to replace those systems. That doesn't mean we have to replace them. It just means that we would suggest doing some testing. So doing some water testing on your pipes and then some infill testing on your wiring. So like the Pogon Ski area, that is a very new facility overall. And you see in 2022, there's no needs. And then even in 2027, there's not very many needs compared to everything else. Your older buildings, you're going to see huge numbers upfront and they're only going to get worse if you don't do anything about it. This is just another way to get your needs from 2022 to 2027. People like bar graphs. It's easier to compare a lot of things with bar graphs. So if your HVAC needs right up front in 2022, a lot of that's going to be from older equipment or R22 units that we've decided to expire. And then at 2027, those change significantly. And you're going to see that for a lot of, a lot of systems. This shows kind of the same thing, but instead of a system that's grouped together by your groups of buildings. And then this shows your needs grouped together by your priorities. So higher priority needs in 2022, you're looking at $22.3 million. And then in 20... In 2027, that jumps to $47.3 million. I know this, these are huge numbers, but it doesn't necessarily mean you're going to have to spend all this money. A lot of that's going to be from those three concealed systems. If you get those tested and you find out that they're in perfect working order, then you don't have to worry about those big numbers from those three systems. Another system that is also in the high priority, that we automatically age-based and expire if it's beyond its life cycle or any life safety systems. So your fire alarms, your exit lighting, anything like that, we automatically expire if it's beyond its life cycle. That's mainly for a liability standpoint on our end, and it's also to show that those systems need to be looked at. This is going to show needs based on each year. Some areas, it's going to spike, like in 2024, 2026. That's mainly from the way we judge certain systems. We go by the condition they're in, how old they are, and then we use that to base how far we're going to push off, push out that system. So some, you're just going to see them spike. And, but that's because we use a certain system for that. So it kind of groups a lot of systems together based on their rating and age. And that's going to go all the way out to, does this go to 2040? Okay. This is going to be all the different systems and how much, how many needs are going to pop up in each year. So in 2022, it looks like you're going to have close to $8 million in roofing needs. Floor finishes are going to be pretty low at $16,000. You probably don't even see that on a, on a bar graph, but it's there. And then here we have some of the big offenders, the domestic water, your sanitary waste. And then down here, we also have branch wiring. Those are those age-based systems that right out, right out of the gate for some of your older buildings, if they're older than 30 years and there hasn't been renovations, those needs are going to pop up right at the front. This continues out, and this is all based on life cycles and the condition that we saw and other factors like that. And this continues all the way out to 2042. And then this gives you a better idea of buildings and how old they are and how that affects the FCI in a lot of ways. So let's see, Fire Station 5, we're looking at a building that's only three years old, so you're not going to see anything really that you're going to need to improve upon or fix in this year and even five years after now. There's really not enough to even show that there's an FCI need. You're looking at about $5,000. Then you have other buildings that are older, let's say, the Nicolason Art Museum at 98 years old. Right off the bat, it's at a 13. And then in 2027, it jumps to 50 on the FCI.
So I'm going to hold up one second and see if the council has any questions for, for anybody there. Yeah, Bruce?
Thanks, Ray. You knew it was coming, didn't you? So I guess I'm really frustrated right now. When you come into my home and you do an assessment, you're going to tell me what's wrong with my home? You're not going to guess where it's going to be 10, 20, 30, or 40 years from now. This is supposed to be an assessment for us to evaluate how much money we need to spend on our facilities this year. And he's talking about, he's made comments about, well, based on whether the building was renovated or not. Why the hell doesn't, don't we know? You're doing an assessment. Why don't you know which buildings have been renovated, which ones haven't been renovated? This is all, this is guesswork. I could have done this with my high school class. I could have done this with my high school class. No offense, I'm not, I'm not trying to be disrespectful. But we're here to get an assessment of where our buildings are today, and we're not getting that. We're getting what may or may not be, based on whether you actually renovated that building or not. Where's the assessment? Why did they not know which buildings were renovated so that we're actually getting real numbers on what needs to be done now? That, that's really frustrating to me. This is a huge waste of time and money, in my opinion, based on what we've gotten so far, unless it's going to get better. And they're going to say, okay, now we're going to take you into each building and tell you exactly what it needs now. I don't care what it needs in twenty forty, because we're guessing whether or not our water pipes are going to hold up, or whether or not a fire extinguisher's, whatever it is. You know, an assessment tells you where you're at now, not, this is all guesswork. It's really frustrating to me because we, as a council, need to know, especially with our budget, the way it's looking in capital, everything, we need to know what needs fixed now. Th- this is all guess. I haven't heard one thing yet that says that swimming pool is cracked on the bottom. The bottom's going to have to be replaced. We're going to have to suck that water out, excavate that, put a new bottom in it, and boom, it'll be good for thirty years. Instead, we're getting, well, if the wires when we tear the wall open are bad, we may have to replace those. Come on.
Yes, sir. So, gang, to get here, so a hundred percent correct. So we did do an assessment at each building. And with that, we identified what needs to be replaced right away. So each of the systems that we looked at, whether it's floor finishes, windows, doors, roof coverings, got a rating of one through five. They really correspond to a condition, right? Whether it's a good condition, fair condition, or poor condition. Based on that condition, that feeds into a capital forecast. Now, as far as what needs to be replaced right this second, that aligns with the poor condition that we would give to specific systems at the building level. That's what you're going to see in twenty twenty-two. So that FCI you see right now for the twenty twenty-two FCI, those are your current needs as of right now in those buildings. And that's going to be due to condition or due to age. As far as renovations go, we do know if a building has had a renovation or not. That's part of the onsite process we do with, we interview the, the staff there and as well as the, the main point of contest we had to verify if renovation took place. And if it took place, was it a cosmetic renovation or just a renovation? Or cosmetic renovation or a full-blown renovation down to the studs where everything was removed and replaced? And I used to briefly face that. The report that Dylan is showing right here is an executive summary. This is more at the city level, an entire roll-up of all of the needs, broken down by what we would call campuses. That being said, there's another report, what we call a campus report. That's what's going to go more into narrative for each of the buildings. So it'll describe the exact same thing. It'll describe the FCI, the age of the building, the needs of the building, as well as some narrative associated with those needs. We call them need details that are going to go more into depth. Let's say you see a need in twenty twenty-two for floor finishes. It'll let you know for building, or for Fire Station Five, for instance, the reason there's a need for floor finishes is because the vinyl tile in the entire fires, in the entire fire station is cracked or owed. And so you'll have that narrative as well.
Thanks, Ricardo. I, Zulima's going to mention a couple of things. Thank you.
Mayor, council member, thank you, Alpha and your team, for kind of kicking us off to answer the council member's concern. So what we provided to you was the executive summary. It was that kind of roll-up report of the thirty-three narratives that were done. So individually, each of those buildings received an in-depth narrative report that was anywhere from fifty to a hundred pages, depending on the facility, that listed each of the conditions of the specific systems, as well as a comprehensive asset inventory, which you may recall was one of the primary objectives of this project, because we, as a city, did not have a good inventory of all of our assets in order to start that capital planning process. And so one of the deliverables was that inventory, and, and we have received that for each of the thirty-three facilities. In fact, for a hundred and twenty-seven different facilities that they engaged with during this project. So we, we tried to just provide you all with the executive summary to not bombard you with hundreds and hundreds of pages. Now, that is a spreadsheet that was developed internally by staff to kind of talk about how we're going to eat this elephant. So that, that is actually separate from what the consultant did for us. That is our strategy for how we're going to approach capital improvements over the next four to five years.
Yeah, Kyle.
Thank you, gentlemen at Alpha. Thank you, Zulima, for that additional information. I had a question. So I don't remember what pages was on, but it says this study does not consider security or life safety concerns or address compliance issues related to Americans with disabilities. I was curious, I appreciate the fact that these projections take into account future inflation, but I was curious if we have any idea, these compliance-related issues, any idea what sort of margin they may add to the numbers that you've provided us today? Thank you.
Mayor, council member, I'll, I'll speak to it because the, the line that you referenced was actually in the memo to the council, not provided by our consultant. And so I just wanted to make sure that you all understood really what this study was and what it wasn't. Okay, so as, as the Alpha team has mentioned, those concealed systems are based wholly on an estimate of what the projected life is for the systems. They did not cut into walls to cut open pipe, and they did not do sewer inspections via closed-circuit television. That, that in-depth analysis will need to come next, which is what we will be proposing to you shortly. And, and also I wanted to make clear that they weren't necessarily looking to ensure that we were compliant with code or we were compliant with ADA. And with regard to the life safety, I was more referencing some of the security concerns that have been brought to light in some of the facilities in order to protect employees. So they weren't looking at whether we have ballistic glass or customer service personnel and things like that. So I just wanted to try to be clear on what we're getting for what we paid for as opposed to what we may have assumed or what we may have hoped that the, the project was. But really, this was a fairly inexpensive project and just a place for us to have a start, an, an inventory and an idea that we could then start to work internally to develop that long-term, short-term and long-term capital planning.
Bruce? And that's fair. And, but, but I want to say with, when we're getting a report that's two hundred and some pages long, and we're trying to get through all these numbers and figure out where we're at, and how much capital money do we actually link, actually need? We just got this tonight. And so an assessment to me would be, we scoped that pipe, and that sewer needs replaced. I don't need to hear about the ones that aren't bad. You know what I mean? Because that's, we're talking about spending capital money. We need to know what we're spending that money on. We're looking at hundreds of millions of dollars here, right? And not having a clue what actually needs done and what doesn't. So in my mind, an assessment would have told me, the sewer needs replaced, it's swimming pool, the water pipes need replaced there, this building needs electrical. I guess, and maybe, you know, assumption starts out with ASS, and maybe, maybe I assumed too much in thinking what the assessment should have brought us when we're considering how much money we're going to have to spend and where we're going to get that money in order to spend it. So, and I understand what you're saying. We got to start somewhere. And so maybe I'm just getting the cart ahead of the horse a little bit here.
Vice Mayor.
Mr. Zulima, did you say that there's a report on each building that's been put together?
Councilmember, yes, sir. And I'm happy to provide those reports. Like you said, that it's thirty-three reports of very detailed information and lists of all of our assets.
And so this is just a summary of all of those?
Yes, what was presented to council was the executive summary that just tried to summarize all thirty-three facilities in as concise a manner as possible.
So maybe if we need a copy of that, and that way if people want to go all the way through it and look to see in detail what the problems are, then that can be provided to them?
Absolutely.
But in fairness, you don't know what all the problems are yet, even with that, right? I mean, we haven't scoped pipes, we haven't checked wires, we haven't, you don't honestly know yet. Isn't that true?
Mayor, councilmember, certainly for those concealed systems, you are correct. We, we don't know. What we do know now is what buildings we need to focus on, because those systems have expired by industry standards. And so now we know which, which facilities we really need to focus on doing some more in-depth assessment on.
So it sounds like there's quite a bit of, quite a bit, this is for, I mean, our consultants as well. So it sounds like quite a bit of work has been done. We're just not getting the full, we're just getting the little brief look at it, is what it sounds like. And we're not going to know everything, obviously, with concealed things that we just can't get into, pipes, electric, electrical type things, to be able to do that. Is that fair to say?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I would also add that with respect to this additional analysis that we put together, that we'd like to go through with you briefly, if we could, we have tried to assimilate the volumes of data that these guys put together so that we can give you sort of a next step in the process of hopefully dealing with some of the, the higher priority elements of our higher priority buildings. And so when we get to that point, this, I think, will answer a lot of those questions as well, because indeed, we do have to go through and scope pipe and check out things that, that these guys didn't have in their scope to deal with. I would say, though, that with respect to the report that each of these buildings have put together, you're going to find quite a bit of data in, in the sixty to a hundred pages that each of those buildings have written about them.
Sixty to a hundred for each building?
Right.
Right. How many buildings?
Thirty-three.
Probably a little information, we don't have time.
A lot of narrative.
And Alpha team, feel free to correct me. It seemed like that, that was about the page number, right? Fifty upwards, depending on the, the building.
That's a lot.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
And some of that's certainly determined on the number of assets. So the bigger the building, the more assets we're going to have, mechanical, electrical, all of those kinds of things. And so as they inventory those assets, that adds a lot of volume.
Well, you have to understand where I'm coming from. I sit home on the weekend, when I get this on Friday, and I'm going through this, and I'm seeing hundreds of millions of dollars, and I'm like, uh, you know what I mean? And we just got this tonight, which I haven't even had a chance to look at it yet. So I'm thinking, more for you, how are you going to prioritize? Now I know, how are you going to prioritize what you bring to us and where are we going to find this money? And how many years is it going to take to facilitate it? So that we're not all the way into twenty twenty-seven where those numbers have tripled, based on what I read this weekend. They literally tripled by twenty-seven. So...
Lisa.
So I just, I just want to point out, I'm sure it's the obvious, but we can test out the sewer lines, the electrical, the HVAC, plumbing, we can, we can test it all, but it's not still a hundred percent. Things still go wrong. So although they can do their due diligence to try to best assess these buildings, it's not still going to be a hundred percent.
Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor. To answer my own question earlier, thank you to Councilwoman Sutherland for pointing it out, but on page eleven, it sounds like the consultants have offered an estimate as far as the ADA compliance and see and other things I brought up earlier. It looks like five to twenty percent, so kind of broad, but that's probably about as best as you can do, I imagine. I had a, another question. It sounds like, and this is on page thirty-one, I believe, that gross square footage is, quote, "one of the most basic building blocks for determining current replacement value." And it was noted that these numbers were provided by the city. So I was just curious, Zulima or Carter, how confident are we in those numbers that we provided to Alpha to make those estimations? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would tell you that in terms of replacement value for those structures, that is really just one means of trying to give you some sort of reference to consider each of those facilities and their value. So to answer your question a little more succinctly, I, I don't have a lot of confidence in those replacement value figures, because as we heard from Wild just a few minutes ago, we're seeing contractors not being willing to stand by their quotes for even a period of thirty days. Normally, we get those quotes that are good for ninety. That's at least what I'm more familiar with and, and more if I can get it. And, and now we're at a point where two weeks is becoming about all we can expect. So I'm going to say I don't have a lot of confidence in those replacement values, but I wouldn't say that to give you a feeling that you shouldn't have confidence in the report, because that, that, that is not at all what I would try to paint the brush of a good company.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Carter. I was more curious about the actual gross square footage numbers that those estimations were based upon. Do we have a really good idea within, you know, a margin of five percent what the gross square footage is of our thirty-three primary facilities? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I feel a lot better about that.
Thank you.
Steve.
I guess my concern is, in commercial facilities, we build them with tougher materials, et cetera. Why the thirty years for those when, you know, you don't see that type of aging out on a lot of your residential things, I don't believe? You know, we have houses that last, the electrical, the plumbing, all of it lasts thirty, fifty years. And so what is so different about the commercial building versus residential, when I would have thought they would have, now granted, twelve tubes ground is twelve tubes with ground? So those are the same, but I mean, as far as some of the piping and things like that, I would think they would be every bit as, as good, if not better, than what's in residential construction.
Any other questions?
I, for whoever's willing to answer.
Sure. So again, that's just an industry standard, the thirty-year life for those systems, just what BOMA assigns them. Now, BOMA, I'm assuming they're more for the commercial building, and you're right. Again, just because it has a thirty-year lifecycle does not mean that, you know, on your dirty, your pipes are going to disintegrate or, you know, rust out. I think that's just a lifecycle they use, essentially drawing a, a line in the sand for when you should really consider doing some heavy testing on those systems to see if you can extend the lifecycle. Usually what we see is just that, you know, you do a water test on some of your domestic water, your recent piping, and realize, all is good. You know, we'll come back and, and touch base on this system in ten, twenty years, whatever it might be. But honestly, that's what I think that the thirty, thirty years in BOMA comes from. It's just, you know, when should you reconsider at least testing the piping to see if it's going to need some kind of corrective action?
Bruce, I, I just want to, I, I guess I want to offer some clarity, because I remember looking at the Ford Wyoming Center when we got these this weekend, and there's one-point-seven billion dollars for electrical. There's three-point-nine million dollars for plumbing. And I understand, based on their, what they're thinking, that those are aged out and they need to be tested now to make sure they're okay. So we're going to test them. That's not seven million dollars that we have to spend, which if you read this the way I read it, like shit, we owe, we have seven million dollars, we got to put in just an electrical and plumbing. And we don't even know if that's true. And so that's what I was talking about, the assessment part of it, that was frustrating to me, because this isn't really an assessment. This is a guess that if they're bad, this is what it would cost you to replace. And when we're sitting here trying to consider capital money, where it's coming from, how we're going to, you know, how we're going to prioritize this, and I'm thinking, we need fifteen million dollars for the events, we don't. We don't need fifteen million dollars for that. We just need to go in and test it, and then we may find that we have some problems that need to be upgraded. And that fifteen million could turn into one million or even less overnight. So that's the part of this that was so frustrating for me, because it gave me a skewed idea of what our needs really are. And, and, and when I hear the word assessment, that's telling me, we've assessed this and this is what your needs are. But that, that isn't what this is. So I, I hope that's more clear on where I was coming from. I'm not trying to raise a bunch of hell here. I'm just, you know, we've got a lot of money and things that need fixed, and, but these aren't real. This isn't real until those are, those systems are tested and we find out, right? Even our roof, that's a metal roof, three, almost four million dollars to replace that roof. Is that roof leaking? I mean, is it bad? No, it's not. But time says it should be replaced, but we all know that roof doesn't need replaced. So out of that fifteen million dollars, there's a real likelihood that about one-point-nine million, and that Ford Center is done. Right? I mean, seriously? So you, you understand my frustration with an assessment? That, that's the, where I was coming from, so. And that's just one example out of thirty-three buildings, so.
I'm going to turn it over to Zulima, I'm going to kind of go over this spreadsheet. Does anybody have any other questions for Alpha?
We don't need to go through all two-hundred-and-ninety-four pages.
All right. So honestly, the, the primary concern is, okay, now, now what are we going to do with this data? We have it, we have a baseline, we have some, some estimates provided by the consultant, and much like Councilmember Mel, when I saw the numbers, they were astounding, and I'm like, how are we going to come up with this, right? So then it was up to staff to develop a strategy and move forward so that we can further evaluate these systems and determine where we need to spend the dollars. these systems and determine where we need to spend the dollars, where they're actually needed, right, or how we spend those dollars where they're actually needed. And so what I proposed to Carter, and I apologize for the lateness in getting this information out, it has been a work in progress, you know, and a preparation device for One Cent Seventeen projects that we're evaluating, so, but right now, the strategy we're kind of looking at is taking the cost estimates that were provided by Alpha at a percentage, doing some assessment, whether we're doing that in-house or whether we're contracting some of that work out, and then applying, in most cases, a ten percent of the cost estimate to budget for actual repairs that may be needed. And so let me just walk you through the spreadsheet that you have in front of you. So understandably, so when Alpha came in January, we were under snow, pretty much the entire time they were here, unfortunately. So they did not get an opportunity to physically see all of the roofs like they normally would have in decent weather. And I feel like we maybe failed to provide them with some updated information on roof replacements that have happened, and so admittedly, some of the roof data is not correct, and we will work with them to correct that whenever we get our final reports, because these are still in draft form. That being said, we did an assessment of the roofs that we feel like need to be replaced under that first column, we did utilize their projected amounts with some minor tweaks, for instance, for the city hall roof, because we know that this roof has asbestos, we incorporated an additional amount to account for the abatement that would have to happen if we were to replace this roof. So understanding some of these numbers were slightly tweaked based on things that we know that the consultant was not provided data for. So the roof number stays the same, we're not going to be able to control the cost of the roof unless, of course, we do an evaluation that says really just minor repairs need to be done rather than a full roof replacement. Everything in gray on this sheet was listed in their medium risk category, right, or medium priority category. Everything in white was considered high priority by their standards, and we intentionally left off any low priority items, because at this point, we really just need to focus on the high priority items and getting those addressed first. So anything in gray is a medium priority, other things are white. So if you look at exterior doors and windows and interior construction, what we did was we took the entirety of the 2022 to 2027 amounts for these needs and populated them in the spreadsheet, and for those two particular categories, utilized the estimates provided by Alpha. Same with elevators, which is a high priority need, plumbing fixtures, again, medium priority need. Where we get into some of the strategy pieces is more related to those concealed systems that he talked about. So domestic water distribution, sanitary waste, HVAC distribution systems, those kinds of things that they did not cut into or, you know, utilize any kind of invasive techniques to look at. So what we are proposing is that for domestic water distribution, for the facilities where that has been identified as a concern because they've exceeded their life expectancy, we would do an assessment, which we estimate would cost about six thousand dollars per facility, and then we would budget ten percent of Alpha's estimate in order to address any concerns that were found in the assessments. So we would prioritize assessing these buildings that were listed as having that be a concern over the next four years, and then we would apply the budget of dollars into addressing any repairs that need to be made immediately. For sanitary waste, we are actually proposing that the city purchase sewer inspection system for our Buildings and Structures Division. Currently, our wastewater collection division does have one, but, you know, they don't have the resources to come do all these inspections for us, so we're going to try to complete them in-house. So it would just be the ten percent estimate that we hope would be all that would truly need to be replaced once the inspections were done, and we would assume maybe ten percent would need immediate attention that we would have to address. For rain drainage, that's essentially our building gutter systems, stormwater management type stuff, the same thing. We would in-house through the Buildings and Structures team, do visual inspections, a little bit more thoroughly of those systems, and then we budgeted a ten percent in order to address any major deficiencies that need to be taken care of. And then HVAC distribution was just slightly different in that we really recommend that we go through and do some thorough cleaning of our HVAC distribution, duck work essentially, and then through the process of cleaning those systems, we would get a better idea of what repairs need to be made in order to make those systems more efficient. And we did address HVAC distribution as a medium priority, particularly for the purpose of One Cent Seventeen asks.
Jared, do you have a question?
Do you mind?
No, absolutely.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, could you just give another, just a quick, go over the ten percent figure again, is that like a standard budgeting approach, or is that kind of just like something?
It sure is something. You know, so again, in trying to wrap our arms around, you know, the thirty-three million dollar figure we saw for 2022, we internally with staff said, okay, what realistically can we expect? And generally speaking, in what we've seen, you do a sewer survey, and the whole system doesn't need to be replaced, but you may be going to have to replace certain parts of the system, for instance, and we're hoping, I mean, some of that is sheer hope, that only ten percent of the system would be, would need to be replaced. In some cases, certainly, it may be more, in some cases, it may be zero. You know, we'll just have to kind of see, but for the purposes of budgeting and being able to apply a number that feels more attainable and realistic for the near future, we applied ten percent. Ten percent of the cost estimate provided by Alpha, which again, was escalated each year to account for inflation. Does that make sense?
It does, I understand the logic, yeah, I don't, I guess, is it okay for Philip? I mean, in terms, so I guess I'm, I understand it's taking into consideration the cost estimate, but it's also taking into consideration what we might be able to afford essentially at that time?
Mr. Mayor, it is a little bit of a speculative exercise, but we are assuming that the entire thing is not going to be ready to be thrown out and replaced in total. And so we're trying to hedge our bets a little bit, that by virtue of some additional analysis that we're going to do, if we can get the equipment to do so, that what you're seeing is a more realistic budgetary option to consider versus throwing the whole thing out and reinstalling something brand new.
It's more of a real assessment.
Exactly.
Well, and I guess my, I guess what's going through my mind is, I understand we wouldn't, we don't want to overestimate what the cost could be, but I would be concerned about us underestimating the cost too, and, I mean, wanting to be able to present the reality of what we might be facing, and I think that's important for conversations that are coming up in terms of where we get our revenue from and how we spend our money. And so I don't know if there are, I don't know if Alpha would have information about what's, what is most likely, or if there are ways for us to get, you know, more specific, I mean, if ten percent is right, that's, I'm not, I don't want to push back because I have no idea, but that's just where, that's what is going through my mind, that's why I'm asking the question.
Carter.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Councilmember, for the questions. The challenge that we have is, we are getting some of these percentages with respect to what these folks are sharing with us, as well as what some of our local contractors are sharing with us as well. And so the ten percent isn't a total, you know, just grab a number out of the air kind of thing, but let's assume that it was for a second. At the end of four years, with that type of an estimate, which by some may be way too conservative, we're anticipating needing almost thirteen million dollars to deal with this level of repair, whether we're right or whether we're wrong, you know? And so incrementally, to deal with the systems that we think we're going to need to deal with, we could be light at thirteen million bucks in the next four years. And frankly, thirteen million dollars is a scary figure to try to support in one cent, given some of the needs and discussions that we've had lately about the proposals we're going to be making to you as to how to spend that money over the next four years, because sixty-four point five is going to be dramatically short with regard to what we think your priorities are for the use of that funding.
You want me to keep going? Got anything else?
So really, we carried out the strategy, the highlighted columns that you see at the top are where we applied some strategic analysis with that ten percent, or in the case of HVAC distribution systems, twenty-five percent budget estimate for what we anticipate we might have to actually address once we do further inspection. You know, so fire protection, of course, is a high priority that we would look at, and in that particular instance, for the design purposes of Project Safe and the city hall facility, we engaged an agency to come out to do an additional flow assessment, that cost us a thousand dollars, so we assume that it's going to cost very similar for the other facilities, hence, we're applying a one thousand dollar assessment cost plus ten percent that we think we may need to address. So, you know, certainly, Councilmember, to your point, I will be standing in front of you if we see catastrophic concern and we need additional funds to address it, but I'm really hoping that we're creating a budget that will support the immediate needs and help us chart a path forward.
Amber.
To clarify, we'll know more about how accurate that ten percent figure is after we do the assessment.
Yep.
Mayor, Councilmember, and to add to that point, part of the deliverable of the assessment created by Alpha is a software application called Apps, and that will be delivered to staff and staff will be trained, and that will become our asset management system moving forward. And so as things are analyzed, we will be able to adjust those predicted life expectancy figures appropriately based on our analysis and receive additional cost estimates projected out to the appropriate time.
Yep, Carter.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my hope is that the twelve point nine million dollars we're going to need over the four years is a much bigger number than we actually need. But we're really not going to know that until we do have the opportunity to do some very acute investigation in terms of what our needs are going to be, because I certainly don't want to say, hey, you need to set aside thirteen million dollars out of your sixty-four point five and then be so dramatically wrong that, either way, up or down, that it was a fool's errand almost. I don't want to do that, I want to have better data than that. So I think the next steps that Zuleem is recommending as far as this approach is concerned, is a really good way to wrap our heads around a very, very big elephant that we have in the form of probably a hundred million bucks at the end of the overall analysis that these guys put together for us. It's a big, big number.
Would it be appropriate to start a facilities fund that that thirteen million dollars goes in? And the reason I'm saying this is because then if you look at the medium to high priority, it's twenty-six million. And so anything you have left over goes, you know, stays in there, and then your next year, you're not eating such a big bite out of. I'm just wondering if it would be easier to manage the facilities that way.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I think that would be a really good idea, absolutely, because we may find that twelve-nine is too light, or that it's a good way to sort of make a revolving fund that perhaps we don't have to use immediately.
Well, and then when you do have those catastrophic things, the money you were able to save, you've got it set aside, I don't know, just a thought.
Amber.
Well, to that point, part of the reason that this was important to me when we first set out to do this was we were being offered some opportunity to take on additional facilities, and it sounds great, like, cool, another facility, somebody else is going to, here's another example, right? Here's, this is, the upfront costs are covered, but if we're responsible for maintenance, maintenance is not nothing. And so I wanted to have a better way of understanding what the true and total cost of taking on any of these projects is over time. And so I think that, you know, until we can understand what that looks like with our existing facilities, we have no hope of understanding it with any new projects that we might be taking on. So for instance, we just bought the Casper Business Center, like, that was the upfront cost, here's the renovation cost, and we need to be prepared for thirty years when we need new HVAC, and for twenty-five years when the electrical is aged out, or whatever all these, you know, lifespans are. And so theoretically, like, we should be planning for that now so that when we get to those big ticket items, either we have money set aside in a fund, or we at least have some sort of, you know, we've got it in our mind that that expense will likely be coming in the next five to ten years, and we can prepare for it adequately, but, you know, some of, it seems to me that we, at this point, struggle with some maintenance, larger-scale maintenance costs because we don't have a fund, or because we don't have a strategy in place, or whatever it is, and so it seems like this is the step needed to get us to that point.
Bruce. And the idea came from the Fireman's Fund, that's, it's inevitable, we're going to have to pay that money, and so we've decided to set a fund aside where we're going to put money in it. And I almost think we should be doing it with our facilities, because the long term, and we've got to set up the future councils with the ability to be able to deal with this stuff, because trying to grab sixteen or eighteen million dollars out of the air in a tight year makes it awful tough. So it just seems like a good strategy to me.
Mr. Mayor, some may view the Perpetual Care Fund as that fund. We would just need the right strategy and the right direction that treats it like that. Right now, we're just kind of treating it as a, well, like it says, perpetual care, so that we have something in place that provides us operational dollars to take care of minor repairs and subsidy issues and those kinds of things. To make it really act like the Fire Fund, Fire Fund A Fund, we need to treat it more like a sinking fund, so that indeed, we count on interest income being put back into the fund, we set it aside for how many ever years we need it to cover, as well as the amount of repair and the dollar value that comes with that as our goal as well. So like, for example, with the Fire Fund, we said we need seven million dollars by year twenty. We worked backwards, if you will, with respect to a moderate level of interest income that we would put back into it, as well as the expenses that we would take out on an annual basis, and we were able to make that calculation. If indeed, the Perpetual Care Fund needs to act like that, we've got a really good head start with thirty million dollars in place, we just need to make that calculation based on what we want it to cover and for how many years it should be expected to make that coverage.
Are we able to continually fund the Perpetual Care Fund with One Cent funding? Because we can use One Cent funding on a lot of this stuff, right? So are we able to delineate, if you will?
Mr. Mayor, I certainly think so. It kind of depends on how you want to spend that sixty-four point five million over the next four years, because a part of that could certainly be dedicated to the Perpetual Care Fund, if indeed, you want to treat it like a true sinking fund.
I just worry so much about what we've done for so many years, just kicked the can down the road and not take care of our facilities, and, you know, because you see what this number does in just four years, five years, it triples, and so if we don't, we don't do something, we're going to really, we're going to put future councils in just a horrible position, and in our city. So I'm just trying to think of a way to fund it and make sure that it's getting done, if you will.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I would tell you, the secret to our success in being able to do something like that, particularly if we're going to repurpose that thirty million dollars, would be to very seriously consider the opportunity we would have if indeed, we could invest in equities like the state does, like the state currently does. That's all we're asking, is that cities and towns be able to invest like the state currently does. And if we could, we could make that Perpetual Care Fund work for us in ways to deal with these kinds of things that we have never had the opportunity to do before.
What do we need to do to make that happen?
We need to alter the Constitution in November that allows us to do that, because then that interest income all of a sudden jumps through the roof for cities and towns. And for those who are equipped to deal with funds like we already have, that is a very good strategy.
So, Carter, do you need a thumbs up from us on this?
So what, I guess I need to ask, what is our consulting team expecting from us, Zuleem has to wrap this project up?
We are sitting, council, on... Mayor, sitting council, honestly, I think that we have been working with Alpha to finalize, you know, our acceptance of the, of the draft reports, so that we can get the final deliverables and close this project out. And then it's really up to the city teams to, to start initiating our next phase of evaluation and, and certainly working with the leadership on the budgets. So at this point, unless you have direction, if there's a concern about the 10% estimate, and, and you want to see something different, certainly we would take that direction, modify our documents, and bring it back to you. If you feel comfortable with that strategy, then that is what I will be proposing to the rest of the executive team, in, in the form of one cent ask for one cent 17, as well as, you know, future capital investments as well, or a fund potentially.
Amber, then Bruce.
I, I think I'm comfortable starting at 10%, and it comes back. But that's not going to work for us, and we'll reevaluate. But I, I do have a question. Has any, have any of the costs to continue this assessment on, or these 10% figures been factored in the 2023 budget? Or are we really looking at implementing this in 2024, this 10% figure?
Mr. Mayor, council member, I was afraid you were going to ask that.
I, I hear a budget amendment.
Yeah, right. I, I, I would feel much, much better, even though our buildings folks probably don't like this answer, of using this tool to focus some of our funding energies for fiscal year '24 than trying to deal with fiscal year '23 at this juncture. I, I, I would certainly say that some of these repairs and issues that we find may need to come forward in the form of amendment to you later in the fiscal year. But for now, if we can focus on fiscal year '24 as sort of a start for a lot of this, we will use the time in the meantime to start our analysis that goes deeper.
Okay. And I, I'm assuming that's, that some of these things that have been called out in this assessment were already known, and have already been budgeted for the course of just normal processes?
Correct.
Bruce.
I, I think the 10% is, you're not going to know until you do it. Everything's so unknown. So you got to start somewhere. And I guess we're going to find out if 10% was enough a year from now, or if we got to go to 20. I mean, that's, so, it is what it is.
Council okay with 10%? Whether we're going to request? Thank you. Thank you, Alpha.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Bill, too. Bye.
Okay. Rex, you're right on time. 7:10. Parkway parking fee resolution. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is a follow-up item that came by virtue of the first reading regarding the Parkway parking dialogue, and, and of course, first reading the ordinance. As you will recall, the, the resolution is really the side of this conversation that we need to ultimately put into place that memorializes the fee structure of the private use of our, of, of the city's parkways. And so as I understood it, the request was to take up the resolution side of the discussion tonight and leave the ordinance dialogue for the reading process and the, and the hearing process and so on. That's already commencing on the floor. But if I misunderstood, obviously, we can take this conversation however council would like to.
I don't think that's correct, Carter.
Okay. So with the direction we get tonight, we'll start putting together draft resolutions for you to consider, obviously, at some point closer to the third reading, that will enable you to not only authorize the use of the Parkway consistent with what your direction would be, but also the way in which that use be accounted for from a fee perspective in a, in a partner resolution that would be passed at that point in time.
Okay. Should we open it up?
Yep.
Bruce.
Oh, yes. So what I found astounding in that meeting was we had talked about the average cost to pave that would be between $1,500 and $2,000. And that was what was said on the floor. And the only thing they were angry about was the $100 upfront fee. Because I specifically asked Dave, I said, so we waive that fee and we just go with 25 bucks. You're going to pay that? Yep, that's all we want. So from what I heard in that meeting is, we just go with the $25 fee, which is going to cover the sticker, and they're going to pave the park on, on it. I mean, and over $100, if that's what's going to make our constituents happy, I don't know why we wouldn't just waive it. That's what I got from that meeting. I don't know if anybody else was kind of seeing or hearing the same thing, but that's what I got out of it.
Steve, Captain.
From Mr. Ellison, what's a building permit cost for a $2,000 project?
A $2,000 project? We, Mr. Mayor and councilman, we go by a fee schedule. So it increases as we do that. I would have to calculate it real quick here. I do have a fee schedule with me. $2,000 project, it is $69 plus $35. So...
It's a hundred bucks for...
$104.
Hundred, it's $104 for building permit. But if we're going to give them the rights to do it with this other fee, then it's a wash. So we can waive the fee that you're talking about, and they're forced to go spend $104 for a building permit?
Do you have to buy a building permit to pour a sidewalk?
Mr. Mayor and councilman, no, you do not.
Do you need...
Flatwork, flatwork does not require a permit per the building code, unless it's 30 inches above grade.
So you wouldn't need it?
Okay.
Yes.
So by waiving the $100 fee, they don't have to buy a building permit. They just pay their $25 and, and they, and they have to pour their concrete, or get it asphalted, or whatever.
Mr. Mayor, I, I appreciate the, the line of dialogue that this is going down, because I do think the, you know, the proposal is very analogous to a, a building permit process. Whenever we have a, a building project taking place, a citizen's required to come in and visit with Craig and Dan and say, hey, I've got this project in mind. I need you to come look at it to see if it's going to meet code, to see if it's going to meet whatever specs, blah, blah, blah. And we send our folks out and they check it out. And, and based on the, the cost of the project and the fee structure that Dan just described, we assess that permit to ostensibly and theoretically cover the time of our people to go out there and check it out. I'm not sure why this would be any different. This feels like a building permit program to me. And so if, if indeed we're asking for improvements to be made on public property, I'm not sure why we would be less concerned about how well they do that on public property versus what they do on their own. And so from my standpoint, if you want folks to go out and look at it, and go out and, and check it out to make sure it meets some level of spec, I'm not sure why it's unreasonable to expect that some of those fees should cover the time of our people to go out and check it out. If it's $100, it's hard for me to understand why that's a deal breaker, frankly. But in the same token, I don't know if I, I, I would recommend that we get out of the building permit process with the way that this kind of a project can go. Because to me, that's, that's the toe, or the pond of water that we're dipping our toe into. Just a thought.
Bruce.
There, there's a couple issues that, that I'll take with you. One is, they don't need a building permit to pour sidewalk. You don't need it. And so if we're going to ask them to buy a permit now, we're back to doing the whole thing that pissed everybody in the audience off in the first place. And secondly, that $100 fee was the only thing that they were in opposition of. And there was plenty of them. We all heard it. That's the only stickler that was going on. Because I even said to them, it's going to cost you $1,500 to pour it. Is the $100 fee really that bad? Yes, it is. We don't need government already. And in my opinion, our people are already being paid by the taxpayer. So to make it sound like it's going to cost them $100, no, it's not. They're already paid. It's already in the budget. It's part of their daily work. They go out and they look at it. Over $100, I would rather my constituents are happy and doing it the right way. That's how I feel. That's what I heard that night in there, and that's what I'm advocating for.
Amber, Lisa, and then Steve.
My, um, one addition to that, because I agree, I think, you know, that the difference between this process and a building permit process is that we're going to be getting $25 every year in perpetuity for as long as they're using this space. So theoretically, in four years of using that space, you know, we've made it back. Maybe it's a, the delayed accumulation, but, you know, there's still, there's still some sort of, you know, compensation over time to cover costs associated with doing this. I do think that the process still needs to be in place. So the process that we initially set out, so that we can ensure that the criteria are being met. I just suggest that we, I, I don't think that there's going to be, that the level of work that this is going to rise to is going to require additional FTEs or anything like that. And I think if it does, maybe we'll need to reconsider this. But I think for the time being, it will, I don't, I don't anticipate that it's going to be suddenly, we need a whole new person to go out and manage this program. So I suggest $25 every year in perpetuity, process stays in place, so that we can ensure that all the criteria are being met that we laid out in the, in the plan.
Lisa.
Okay. So, because this is where I believe that it's going to happen. So just assume that people are going to go out and buy the permit, and they're going to skip past the whole improvement piece. So, so what does that look like as law enforcement or whatever? Say they bought the permit, but they haven't improved it the way we've asked them to?
Mr. Mayor, council, I would tell you, they wouldn't be eligible for a permit, in, in my opinion. And furthermore, I would also suggest that there ought to be some level of design standard that ought to be considered, so that, you know, they're not building a half inch layer of concrete on gravel, or, or, you know, inappropriate forming, or, or any of those kinds of things. And so i- if indeed we, we don't have the level of oversight that suggests that adherence to whatever guideline you set, I would say that permit shouldn't be extended.
Hold on one second, Bruce. Steve Cathy, then Steve Freo.
Basically, we heard the other night at council from a half a dozen people that were all neighbors on one particular block, is what we heard. We didn't hear anybody from 12th Street. We didn't hear anybody from 13th Street. Didn't hear anybody from any place else in town except that one block. I'm not going to make a citywide decision because I've got a half a dozen people in one spot that are upset. I think we ought to keep the $100. You get your permit along with the specs that you're talking about. Because yeah, you could go out and just, you know, do whatever. And, you know, you could pour 1,500 pound concrete. That's going to come apart. You need at least 3,500 pound concrete. You probably need, what, at least four inches thick? You know, et cetera. So there needs to be some kind of a standard as well, to when you come in and get the permit. Just like now, if I go down and get a building permit, and I'm going to put in a foundation, they have a little sheet that has the foundation, how deep it's got to be, how much rebar's got to be in it, the whole nine yards. And that's kind of what you're talking about from a standard as far as putting these things in. So that kind of too forces them to come down to City Hall, and let's see what we're going to do.
Steve, bro.
All right. So I'm going to be completely different than everybody at this table. I wasn't here last week, so I didn't have my say in it. But first of all, I guess the first question I would have is that downtown's a good example. Of all these houses that are bought, the people that own the property, the homes themselves and have a Parkway out in front of it, they are responsible to take care of the maintenance of that Parkway, correct? City doesn't come through and do it, they do it themselves. So how often do we go out and, whether we send law enforcement, or we send code, code enforcement, or building inspectors, how often do we go out there and look at it and make sure that they're doing that properly, that they're maintaining it? But you're responsible for doing that. That's a portion of your property. I really don't know why we're going down this road. At the end of the day, if a person wants to go out there and pour concrete, they should have to go by standards, so that it doesn't fall apart and crack and everything else. But pour the concrete. You have to maintain that Parkway. Whether you want to go out and plant roses and flowers and everything else and make it look beautiful, that's up to you. You want to go out and pour concrete on it and park up there? That's on you. Then go do it. The only thing I think we should be discussing is if they're going to pour concrete out there and use it as a parking space, then it should be a legally registered and insured vehicle that can be parked on that. And the person that should be able to enjoy that parking without having to come down and get a permit and ask if I can use my piece of property is the homeowner. If somebody else comes and parks on the property, they're parking on your property. You should be able to ask, or it should be written in there, that you would be able to have that person have the vehicle move so that you can enjoy your property. I think we're going way too deep in the weeds on this thing. It would be much simpler to say, maintain it. Whether you want to plant trees, you want to plant roses, or you want to plant concrete, do what you want to do and use it the way you want to use it.
Bruce, I agree with you 100%, except for one thing. It's not their property. It's city property. It's public property. And the reason for the permit is so that they can go out when somebody parks there and say, that's my spot. In other words, I'm permitted for that piece of property now. So that was the only reason for the permit. We agreed no trailers. We agreed no motorhomes, only vehicles that were licensed and registered. And the only reason for the permit was to guarantee them that spot because they paid the money to beautify it and concrete it. They should be able to park there. And so if the neighbor comes up and pulls there, they, they have their $25 permit. The, the only thing that we were at odds about was whether to charge them the $100 upfront or not. And I'm against doing that, because we're already paying the people that are going out and, and looking at this stuff with taxpayer money. And I can tell you, keep this in mind, after we opened up the parkways on 12th and 13th, two people came in to get a permit. That's it. Two. So that 200 bucks doesn't mean jack diddly. Where the money's going to be made is once this is a citywide program. And if they don't choose to pour concrete in there, and they're trying to drop, park on rock and grass and drag that stuff in the street, which we've talked about, if they don't go about doing it the right way and get their permit and do it right, now they're going to start getting tickets. And our very own police department started handing those tickets out three weeks ago. Remember how much backlash we were getting from it? So we put a moratorium on that until we could get through this. So I can promise you, we are going to make a hell of a lot more money off of the tickets that are going to be issued to people until they do it the right way, than worrying about $100. And when somebody has to pay $2,000 to put a sidewalk in, I'm, I'm just so against paying $100. Because allegedly, the $100 is for our guy to go out. Our guy's already paid by taxpayer money. We don't need the $100. Get your permit so that you're guaranteed your pocket spot, and let's just do it the right way. I'm, I'm with you 100%. Other than we do need the $25 permit so that they're guaranteed that spot, because they paid the money to beautify it for their home.
Sean, do you care if Steve has the response?
I was just going to say that, or the first part that I knew was...
Okay, all right.
You're with me? What?
No, that, it's, it's public property.
Oh, right.
Yeah. It's not their property. It's, it's just like the sidewalk. Yeah, you have, you, you, you're supposed to maintain the sidewalk, but it's not yours. It's the public sidewalk. Like, I can't go out there and tell someone to get off my sidewalk. The same goes with the Parkway.
But you have the permit, you can, right?
Right. But yeah, I mean, it's the same, like, if a restaurant wants to put outdoor seating on, on a public sidewalk, they got to get a permit for that, because that's a public easement. It's a pub, that's public sidewalk. And so the same goes for the Parkway. If you're going to use public property for private benefit, there has to be a permitting process. And constitutionally, we can't just give them the property for free and let them use it for their own private benefit. That's just, it's unconstitutional.
Steve, did you want to say something?
Well, the only thing I was going to add back to that, though, is the fact that if it, I agree with you, it's public property. But we're telling them to maintain that public property.
So do the sidewalks.
Exactly. But maintaining the sidewalk would also be like shoveling snow off of it. It's not, it's not saying plant grass, plant flowers, plant trees, none of that stuff at all. That's what I'm saying. Is if we're going to make them do that, if you have to maintain that, you should have some say in doing that. I don't think they need to pay a fee to go down there and pour concrete out front. And if it becomes an issue to where somebody's parked on it, that, that's a holder for an animal there, because now you've got somebody parked on public property, and I get that. parked on public property, and I get that. You should get the enjoyment of it, being it's an extension of your property. You don't own it, but it's an extension of your property. But I just think we're getting way too deep in the weeds on it.
Steve Caffey.
To me, what Sean is talking about, and Bruce is talking about, and the use of that piece of property, to me is no different than the people over around the high school that have, that have gone out and bought the permit to be able to park in front of their house, because the high school kids fill up all of the parking and they can't even park in front of their own house. So if you can go down right now and get a permit, that you are, have, that you have, you have the right to restrict parking from certain time to certain time in front of your house, and to me, that's doing the same thing here, is that you are buying a permit that you have exclusive use of that piece of property. Otherwise, I can go down there and drive right up there on that and park there and tell the guy to go pound sand, because it's public property and he has no exclusive right to it. And that's what you're doing with that twenty-five-dollar fee, is you're granting him exclusive use of that piece of property.
Correct, and that's, I know you're appointing me, and that's what Mr. Hanley said in our meeting. In order to allow private to use public, you have to have a permit. And so, that's the only reason I came up with the twenty-five bucks, 'cause it, it's cheap, it's for an entire year. It just guarantees you your spot. But I, I would like to see this council waive that hundred-dollar fee. I, I think it's ridiculous. I we don't need to recover a hundred bucks when our person's already on payroll.
So it sounds like there's three, three options on the, on the table right now. The first one is, um, waive, waive the hundred-dollar fee, um, set it at twenty-five dollars in perpetuity every year for, for and Steve has mentioned just let it be, um, if you have a registered vehicle. Am I on the right track? Would you have a question?
Can, can we stop saying waive the fee, because we would just establish that there is no.
Right. Establish no fee, you have a registered vehicle.
Twenty-five dollars every year forever.
I, I disagree. You, you have a fee already in place.
Okay.
Granted, you put a moratorium.
Aren't we just eliminating that entire fee category, though? Not waiving it, waiving it indicates that at some point we could stop waiving it and suddenly everybody has a thing.
You definitely have a fee.
Yeah, we have a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee, I think, right?
Yes, so I think the fee should, the inaugural, initial fee is eliminated, and you create an annual fee of twenty-five dollars.
Which we have to do by law, according to Mr. Hanley. We have to have some kind of a fee in order for them to park there, on public land.
So, so establish no fee, is that better? Or eliminate?
Eliminate the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar inaugural fee, and establish an annual fee of twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five dollars, and/or, Steve also has mentioned too that he had had, or he had made a, um, I am getting tired, oh crap, I have too many things going on in my head. And then Steve was just saying that let's waive a hundred percent, no, no fees, nothing, if you have a registered vehicle.
Who can't do that?
Who knows, we're gonna be seen.
Okay, so, so it sounds like there's two options. Um, basically that we eliminate the, the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee and don't have that at all, um, and then we just have a twenty-five-dollar, um, in perpetuity.
And then, at council next Tuesday during second and third readings, that addresses what they have to do as far as the concrete and, and up to code and, and all that.
Okay.
Uh, because it does. They, because we don't wanna park it on dirt and drive it, pull the gravel out in the street, so that part of it, this is just the resolution for the fee.
Exactly.
Right?
Exactly. Yeah. Steve.
So, throw one more wrench in it, and this question would be, uh, for you, Dan, or, or Craig. Some of these new subdivisions that we have, a lot of, is there anything written in there as far as parkways? And I'll give you, for instance, Twenty-first Street at the roundabout, you got trees all the way down that and you got grass. What if somebody on the middle of the block says, hey, I'm gonna go pour concrete out front and I'm gonna park? Um, is that handled in the covenants for those areas or not?
In some, it's not a hundred percent. Centennial Hills is one that we specified that that was a tree lawn. That the purpose of that area is to plant trees and provide shade and all that. Other areas, that's not specified.
But it is in ours, in our ordinance. They, they can't, they can't take out trees, they can't, um, they have to get, they have to have an arborist come out and.
No removal of trees in the parkways, it's authorized by the city arborist for disease viability concerns.
Right, yeah, so that's in our ordinance.
Right.
I was gonna say the, like on Twenty-first Street, even if they poured concrete, they're not, no, they're not gonna be able to park on it because it's only about three feet wide, so that they're.
He was just making a point.
But, but no, no, I, I appreciated that.
Motorcycle holes. So I know in our ordinance, they have to go, they have to call, uh, before they get the permit, they have to make sure line of sight's open. Um, no, no, uh, trees are being blah, 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 so.
Amber. Hold on one second, I gotta, Amber.
Sorry.
And is the, is the width established in that standard as well, minimum width expectation?
I thought it was, but let me double-check, 'cause it may, if it's not, it probably should be.
Yeah, 'cause I think all we talked about was from the sidewalk to the street. I don't think we ever specified.
The, the parkable width, if you will, yeah, yeah. Let, let me double-check that, 'cause I'm not.
Steve Caffey.
Were we gonna have, Dan, go ahead and get us a set of specs that we need to reference in the ordinance?
That probably makes sense, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, to, it, um, which would be similar to the circumstances that would make a parkway eligible for parking.
Well, we're trying to eliminate the mud and the gravel, and that gives, if we have a set of specs, that gives the chief grounds to write tickets or whatever, but it looks like you have a comment.
We do have a set of construction standards that the Public Services Department has in a book that is used, sidewalks are required permit, and the curb cut require permit. I think you can see that example when driveways look like a jigsaw puzzle, but the sidewalk looks good. So, so this is a good thing to, to have a permit, so that it can be inspected and make sure it's done correctly. But we do have those City of Casper construction standards already created that could be used.
So I can pour the parkway, if I can have a follow-on?
Yes.
So I can park the parkway without a building permit, but if I do a curb cut, or if I replace the sidewalk, I have to have a permit?
That, that is through the engineering department, not the building department.
Okay, but still, okay. I knew I had to have one for the curb cut.
Did you have something, Bruce?
Uh, just, one, one of my worries is, if we're gonna require a certain amount of width between the sidewalk and the street, on some of these skinny streets, it's almost imperative that even if that's only a two-foot section, that they can pour that adjacent to the sidewalk to get their tires up on the, on the, uh, you know, on the curb, which allows egress through there without them getting their mirror taken off. So we, we have to be really careful, and I think we talked about this before, about not putting a width on it. As long as they poured it and didn't encroach on the sidewalk, which is then a ticket. As long as the ticket's up, but so they could get their tires up in order to get their vehicle partway off the street, so we have to be careful. I, I remember having this discussion about the width.
Well, basically, we leave it as stated in the ordinance now, sidewalk to curb. That sets your width, which solves your issue, which I would, I would hate to come in and tell them they can go ten foot, and then the sidewalk is eleven, so now you've got a one-foot strip of dirt or mud or whatever there, so, uh, using that as an example.
Right. Steve Freel.
Carter, just following up on the, putting the specs in there, can we just reference that to whatever the spec book would be? Because obviously, that may change. It changes all the time, so it may change later down the road so that we don't have to go back and change the specs each time, it'll just be whatever the current.
You bet.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, I would think so, but I, I certainly would probably confer with these guys to make sure.
So based on this conversation for, per the resolution for the fee structure, uh, we're set at twenty-five-dollar fee every year? Okay, council's okay with that? With that, all right.
All comments on the ordinance will be saved for our second reading?
Yes. As we were going down that road quickly, I saw, I started to notice that hue come up as I wrapped it up.
I will save mine.
Sorry, Kyle. All right, uh, let's start winding down, it's getting late, so agenda review. Kirk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as far as the agenda is concerned, um, we are anticipating for the twenty-first, um, in pre-meeting, uh, a report from the judge. Um, it's possible, though, that this, this would need to be bumped to the pre-meeting of the fifth. And so be aware that that might move potentially, so, um, you, you'll obviously see this coming up if indeed it does happen to need to move. Um, as far as the meeting of twenty-first is concerned, the Bar and Girl License for La Cucina is one of the items that, uh, you, you have been anticipating. Um, and there's also discussion about, uh, the parkway, uh, dialogue in here as well. Um, I would anticipate, however, that the third reading would be July, the first meeting in July for this, for this topic. Let's see, as far as, uh, future work sessions are concerned, um, we've got one set coming forward, which is where we'll bring a series of recommendations for you to consider. The long-awaited Ford Whaling Center study should be coming forward on the twenty-eighth, uh, which comes in concert with the subdivision discussion surrounding that area. So that's what that North Platte River Park designation is meant to describe, the area around the Event Center. We also have another facility discussion coming forward as it relates to potentially expanding the ice arena, and that's what that item is meant to cover as well for the twenty-eighth. Um, let's see. Another item that you will want to anticipate is the Spectra contract amendment, that really should be the OVG contract amendment. Uh, we've talked about that, um, a couple of times now, I think. Um, but indeed, if council would like more discussion on that amendment before your approval on the fifth, let me know, and we can make that interim discussion happen. As far as other items are concerned for future agendas, I, I'd like to direct your attention to the the very last page entitled Future Agenda Items. If you don't see things that are docketed that you would like to see docketed, uh, certainly let us know and, and we would take that direction. Otherwise, that's all I have on the agenda.
Awesome. Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and thank you, Carter, for the overview, uh, for the June twenty-first meeting, I see that's on our agenda, for authorizing the discharge of two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars of uncollectible accounts receivable balance. Uh, uh, my understanding is that that's probably, um, uh, you know, rates that were due for residents that were simply not paid. I, I would just curious a little bit more information, I, we'll get it next week, but um, I was curious kinda what circumstances are uncollectible accounts receivable, what's in that bucket?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Councilman. Typically, that's what I call our bad debt write-off, that, that indeed council has to take action on in order for us to actually go through a bad debt, uh, write-off. Generally speaking, it's for, for debts that could include bills, it could include liens. I meant utility bills, it could include liens, um, where the property owner has deceased, or the property owner is incarcerated for a long period of time and likely not able to pay up on that debt. Um, or we, we are just simply unable to find the person responsible for the debt because they've moved on and, and our collection efforts have not yielded uh, names and addresses and phone numbers and those kinds of things, after an extended search to try to make that happen. And so, that's our broad overview. Um, certainly the memo would clarify a lot more detail than what I just did, but if there's other things I can look into, I'd be happy to.
Not that we're gonna send that off.
Okay.
Bruce.
Is that unpaid court fines also, or is that not, uh, completely separate?
Mr. Mayor, it absolutely can include uncollectible court fines as well, yeah. We try to wrap it all up into one so that you're not having to go through this more than you need to.
Thank you, Carter.
You bet.
Uh, any legislative review update, I know maybe from WAM, or anything to talk about that yet?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, Mr. Mayor. Um, from the resolution standpoint, uh, the City of Casper did really well in, uh, its work with, um, WAM's Resolution Committee last week. Uh, there were a number of items that, uh, Casper carried forward on, on your behalf, and, um, the only item that didn't get approved by WAM's body is with regard to the, uh, the resolution we put together for the, um, the pharmacy benefit manager debate that will likely come up during the legislative session. Otherwise, everything else was supported, and, uh, we will likely see formal action throughout the legislative session on, on the issues that were important to this city council, so. Good news from that, from that standpoint.
And I'll speak a little bit on the council roundtable about that. Let me get there, unless you want me to?
Just curious of why they didn't want to move that forward, considering how much each city is gonna end up paying for that.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I, I would agree. I, I would think that that issue would have been a lot easier to debate than it was. Um, I think the thing that set the debate off on the wrong foot that led to its demise was the conversation about, um, the state and/or cities and towns trying to select uh, a, a category of private enterprise that's gonna be protected by statute. And, and when that specter was raised, uh, the group was like, yeah, we don't wanna do that. And, and that kinda shut down the debate as to what the intent of the, of the resolution was really meant to sort of point to.
It went through solid through the Resolution Committee.
Right.
Everybody was on board, but once it went to the whole entire, um, voting members of WAM,
Yeah.
one person raised that specter, and by that time it was pretty old, it was too late.
Yeah.
Amber.
On the same topic, um, is there, do we know if that, if, if some sort of bill or something similar to what we saw last session will be coming forward again in this session? And second question, is if it's not gonna be carried, um, through WAM, do we have any sort of position that we're trying to push for with our local legislators, given that in the last conversation, um, we had, we had a local pharmacy, uh, owner speaking in favor of it, we were taking a position against it. Um, it had been important to me to try to bring the two entities together to come up with a workable solution, so if it's not gonna be through WAM, do we have a strategy internally?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you for that question, uh, because the second half of that discussion and answer is, WAM is still gonna take a position on it. Uh, because the board was concerned that if legislation came forward and we didn't participate, then, you know, fairly negative things could occur, not the least of which would be, um, employers being hit with incredibly high benefit prices, or our local businesses would be left out in the cold with respect to the original intent of that legislation. So the board directed WAM staff, despite the fact that there is no resolution to the effect, to follow the matter and carry forward the two vanguards that I just identified, to be sure that any legislation that did come forward, we would be able to work either against or for uh, on those two guiding principles. So we are gonna participate, we, meaning WAM, uh, albeit outside of the resolution process, because we do expect legislation to come forward.
All right, council around the table. We'll start with Sean tonight.
Nothing from him? I'll yield my time to Kyle.
I need it, I gotta go.
Go ahead, Kyle.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Sean, I appreciate the time. I'll take advantage of it. Uh, uh, sorry, I don't wanna take the window out of yourselves, Vice Mayor, if you were gonna mention it, but Captain Steve Schultz is retiring after thirty-one years of service. I saw, I'll let you, did I, did I hear you groan over there?
He just scratched it off his chest.
You'll sit, be able to say it much more eloquently than I, I just wanted to make sure it was noted. Uh, thirty-one years of service to Casper and Otrona County, both at the police department and sheriff's office. Thank you for your service. Um, uh, was that the WAM convention? and sheriff's office. Thank you for your service. Was at the WAM convention last week with the mayor and the city manager. As always, I learned a lot and was glad to spend time with folks from other municipalities around the state to hear how they're tackling some of the same issues. Did a lot of things, but I particularly enjoyed the economic development tour. It was hosted in Laramie, for those that aren't aware, and took an economic development tour that included Big Hollow Food Co-op, which just recently moved to an old theater. It's a food co-op that is sustained through membership dues by its members and it aggregates and sells locally produced goods and produce and other foods. And so it's just a really cool operation down there. Was glad to see their continued success. They had a public art, two actually, public art installations off the highway. They're rotating exhibits. So apparently the funding they got from the state for YDOT, you know, from YDOT for highway enhancements, they had set aside money to create two special areas off the highway. And they collaborate with a art council collaborative down there to have rotating exhibits through there from local artists, which I thought was really cool. So maybe just something to keep in mind for the future. And we also toured the expansion of the Plenty Campus. And that was, used to be a local company called Bright Agrotech that was in the hydroponic gardening company. And they sold the Plenty, which is a California-based company. And I think they are evaluated, you know, valued at like, man, it was like half a billion dollars or even more than that. So very, very successful venture from Nate Story and Bright Agrotech down in Laramie. Really cool. I used to live in Laramie 10 years ago. Quite a few differences. I wanted to thank Carl Cross at Knife River Materials. I had a terrible morning and ended up putting all my city stuff on top of my car and drove for about a mile before I realized I didn't grab it off. And so Carl was nice enough to grab it off the roadway. Apparently, he tried waving me down and I didn't see. So just thank you, Carl. Man, I was freaking out this morning. Saved my life. I appreciate it.
Screen jerk.
Yeah, thank goodness I keep it in like, you know, my binder and stuff. That would have been bad. And then lastly, I was curious if, I haven't seen it on the agenda and we haven't discussed it, but I personally am interested in a report from whoever our representative is now at Bird, the scooter company. I would like an update on our scooter usage, discuss strategies for reducing inappropriate or illegal parking of the units, which has created a nuisance. I'm sure I'm not alone in hearing from residents about them being inappropriately parked or blocking sidewalks or egresses. It's an issue. And I'm sure we're not alone in that as far as municipality goes. Some of the ideas that have been brought up are potentially the idea of docking stations or areas in the downtown area. So I'd love to explore that with our Bird representatives, see if that's something that's been explored in other communities and kind of how we go about envisioning something like that here as well as the complaint process. I believe you can file a complaint through the Bird program, but I don't believe we have visibility of those complaints, what they are or if they've been addressed. So I would just like some more information on that, whether we can have more visibility of those things or just get more regular reports from Bird on what they're hearing from our residents. That's all I have. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Carl. Lisa?
I have nothing for you.
You're here too.
Sorry. Amber?
Thank you. I attended the Platte River Advisory Committee meeting on Thursday. That was, I'm a new alternate. You're welcome. Yes. On behalf of the mayor. I'm a new alternate to that committee. So that was my first meeting of that committee. So I was really pleased to, to join them to, it was quite a list of projects that are either in the works or in the future or, you know, a little further off looking for funding sources and that sort of thing. But it was very exciting to kind of see the whole list of projects that are at least somewhere on the docket for that group. And then spent the rest of the weekend out and about in the community doing Casper Pride events, which were all very well-attended, very successful, and went off without any issues. And then also a little bit of Nick Fest as well. So it was an active weekend in the community and seems like a lot of really great events that people were able to participate in. So thanks to everyone who was involved in making those things reality for our community. That's all I have. Oh, I have EDJPP and IPO this week. So you can look forward to a thrilling update from me next week on those.
Bruce?
We had, my wife and I attended the Nick Fest concert. Jason Michael Carroll was here, which wasn't advertised very well because we found out about it Saturday afternoon and we made our way down there. There might've been 40 people there, but this guy is, he was amazing. And he was big in the 2000s. So he's always been one of my favorites. So that was really fun for us to sit there unabated, stretched out and got to watch him. It was pretty cool. Rocked the blocks back on on Wednesday nights now downtown at the old Yellowstone Garage. And that seems to be gaining its momentum. Our Walk 321 had some stuff this weekend. It was just really busy downtown if you were able to get out. It was kind of cool. And our weather's finally started to cooperate and allow us to get out to the lake and things. And lastly, I'm quite impressed by this. I'm not an art guy, but I really think that could be something for our community. I guess I'll be curious to see what visit Casper has to say about, you know, the exposure it would bring the city. But, you know, for no cost to us, it might be pretty cool. And I'm still all about, I know Kyle wants to put the archways on Midwest to bring people into town, but I say put them on top of the police building. I'm totally serious. I mean, that'd be pretty cool. I have nothing else. Thank you. Oh, I'm gone next week. So with my wife, we'll be in the Pacific Northwest getting some stuff done. So and then that should be it for us. I think we're on the mend. Yee-haw.
Driving it out. It's a driving, I hope.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Too soon. Way too soon, Sean.
And I will miss the rodeo. I know NFR is going on, CNFR is going on right now. I'll leave that to Mr. Freel. But Thursday night's government night and I will miss that one. So unfortunately, but you guys have fun.
Joy.
What else is on your list so that I can?
No, go ahead. No, I didn't say anything about it. You'll have to accentuate.
Not much. I, we had our monthly ARA JBP, JPB meeting last week. And I think the good news there is that there's been an uptick in interest in the properties. And I think some really good, just kind of thinking and brainstorming about how to decrease or to increase awareness about what costs will be in terms of making the properties available and ready and what the timeline will be there. And so, yeah, I think there's overall like positive sentiment and kind of excitement around some really promising opportunities with development. So that's, that's been exciting to be a part of. That's it.
Steve? Along the lines of the Bird scooters, I got a call this week from a gentleman that had relatives in from out of town. And one of their people fell off of one of those and broke their arm. And while they were in the emergency room, the doctor mentioned that that was the fourth one that week. All of them on the scooters. So we may need to give them driving lessons or whatever, but I thought that was an interesting comment coming from the ER doctor that we are seeing broken limbs from the scooters. And I wanted to bring that up.
Thank, which reminds me, I forgot, I forgot to bring this to the council. Kyle's request was to have Bird come do a report at some point for us. Is that okay with council? Do that at a work?
They were supposed to as part of the agreement. Were they not to, to give us updates?
Mr. Mayor, councilman, they are at the very least supposed to give us kind of usage reporting and that kind of thing. But I happen to believe that they'd be very happy to visit with you and so forth if, if you would like that.
Thank you also, Steve, for saying that.
Yep. And then I also wanted to apologize to the U2 and to anybody else because I told you I was going to be there for the meetings on Wednesday. But I got up Wednesday morning and was hoarse and couldn't talk. And my wife, you're not going anywhere. And she even thought that as it was going that it might've been COVID. So I went and got tested and it was upper respiratory. So life is good.
Good.
We were with COVID people over the weekend. So I wanted to apologize to you.
No worries. Vice Mayor?
All right. Make my way around this paper here. In reference to what Amber was saying earlier as far as maintenance goes on these, it was probably a year ago, I think it was, when we first initially talked to Chris about these different things. But he's got the, there's a horse, horse and cowboy with snow on it over by the Justice Center on Center Street. And it's fading. It's looking, the snow's not looking so good on it. But when we went back to talk to him about it, it comes back to us. I mean, he gave us a code for the color of paint that has to be used on it. But at the end of the day, we still have to buy that paint and put it on there. So these don't, they're not free. I mean, we, when we take them over, we take them over. So Captain Schultz is retiring from the police. But yeah, it's crazy. Yeah. But I don't want to steal the chief's thunder. There's two of the promotions coming along with that. Is that out yet?
Three.
Three?
Yes. Lieutenant Ryan Dabney has been promoted to captain. He's going to be placed over operations. We have Sergeant Lyle Berg has been promoted to lieutenant. He'll be in patrol. And Carl Krugler, a K-9 officer, has been promoted to sergeant.
Nice. So with every good man that leaves, good, or good man or woman that leaves, good people advance. So CNFR is in town. It's in full force. So tomorrow from 9:00 to 3:30 is the softball tournament over at Crossroads. If you have time and you have not, if you've never gone there, you've got to go down and watch it because it's rodeo people. They're in cowboy boots and Levi's playing softball. And how they don't break something is beyond me. But, and that's a full day. There's, there's a lot of, they all go down and compete. So, or a good majority of them. I did receive an email today from, and I was going to forward that to Carter. There's some people that came into town. They caught Sunday and Monday at the rodeo, sent an email asking what next year's dates were because they just absolutely loved it so much, but they had to leave. So, so we're going to forward that information to them for next year's event, but they're definitely coming back this year. Government night is Thursday night and I believe it's 5:00 or 5:30 last year is when they open up the doors. We do go down during, during steer wrestling. We'll go down to go onto the floor. Before you leave here tonight, I need to know who's going to be there and if you have a plus one with you so I can get a number of tickets that need to be left at the door. And the last thing I have, I was here last week because I actually took a vacation and went to CMA Fest in Nashville. And caught Randy Hauser. Kyle, there was a bunch of people that we caught, but Randy Hauser, he's coming here with Cody Johnson in September. If you get an opportunity to go see that concert, you need to go see it. That guy was amazing. Everybody was amazing. But in particular, you got some really good people coming here in September. So I would take him down.
We got our tickets already.
There you go.
Ah, let's see. Couple things? Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Since it was mentioned about the fire, the fire, that's what I'm looking at, the police promotions, the fire is promoting, I think there were 15 or 16 on June 22nd. And come on.
So everybody getting promoted?
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, 11, 12.
Sixteen?
We're a little behind.
Good.
And 16 on July 20th. So I want to make sure that people are aware that people are moving up in the fire department as well.
Chief?
Yeah, Mayor, councilmember. The last few years due to COVID, we did not perform any ceremonies. And I believe it's a really important thing for our department to recognize our people. So that was one of the first priorities on my list is to, to catch everybody up and recognize them. So.
Good for you.
Yeah. So it'll be a good thing for everybody.
I still love you guys, Steve. I mean, it's, you know, but it's.
The two steers have to give equal time between the guns and hoses.
Just a couple of things. I gave a proclamation at the Pride Parade, which was fantastic. It was a lot of people from everything. I didn't get to every event, but it sounded like it was a fantastic celebration. So good on you guys for the work that they did and everything. Got a busy weekend. I've got a proclamation or welcome address at the WAMI Federation of Garden Clubs. I didn't even know there existed. So I will be at that.
You gonna wear carrot suits?
Yeah, so I'm very excited. And then I'm doing the Juneteenth Day proclamation. I think everybody's aware of what Juneteenth is, which is really cool. And so I'll be doing that at the Matt Canfield Park on Saturday as well. EDJ, EDJPP meeting next week. And so I'll be doing that as well. And then, let's see what else. Oh, finally, I just wanted to say it was great going down with Kyle and Carter to WAM. The Resolutions Committee was, was really a breeze because Carter really helped me quite a bit, but it was really successful in that sense. Kyle came and sat in on that committee meeting the whole time. And so it was really, really beneficial. Good community as far as WAM, getting to know the other mayors and other council members and other city managers and so forth. So it was real good. So that's all I've got.
One question, sir.
Yes, sir.
I was hoping, and I forgot, to ask if I could get one of you guys to go to the Planning and Zoning Meeting on Thursday night. I haven't been there in the last two months because they only meet once a month. And I'm going to miss this one as well because I have to take my wife.
Is it Thursday, this Thursday?
It's this Thursday night. I need, it would really be good if somebody would go. I hate to leave them without the liaison. And it's my, like I said, it'll be three months in a row that I've missed. I'll be able to make them from now on. But if I could get anybody to volunteer to maybe go, it would, I think it would be helpful.
How many people are going to government night on Thursday?
Everybody? Okay. Well, maybe Wallace, you can just let them know that, that this will be the last one I miss and, and.
16 ways, circumstances. Then it's government night. Just let them know we're all.
We are at least as much.
Having a beer.
That's a lie. That's a complete lie. But anyway, well, I'll send Ken Bates an email. He's the chairman.
Yeah, I would just let Ken know and just be, you know, the rest of the council's busy and then you're out because of, you know, something pretty big. So.
I will do so.
Do we have to make an announcement for that? Because we'll have more than, we'll have a quorum there. Good for you. We will.
There's no need to make an announcement if you're not going to discuss official business. So please don't.
Don't discuss.
Okay.
Stick to the rodeo topics only.
Okay.
Awesome.
And you won't be there to harass me about being.
If they throw rocks this year, I can't help this.
That's fine. I'm myself.
All righty. Thank y'all.
Thanks, everybody.